I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on Wednesday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven P M. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. Welcome to everyone attending this meeting and I'll take attendance of members and staff. Rob Almeida. I'm sorry, is Rob here?
Um, he is not here yet.
Okay, Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Abby Flanagan, I think will be late. Sue Felshen.
Here.
Mark Giddings.
Here.
And I, Linda Miller, are present, so we will proceed with the meeting and um, hope to have others join us later. Um, Town Planner Elizabeth Hughes is also attending the meeting. I'll briefly review our meeting procedures. Each vote will be conducted by roll call. There would be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating should use the Zoom raised hand function or star nine on a phone in way to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use star six from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address, and any relevant affiliations, and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances, such as those with disabilities, and are requested to be respectful and fall within the subject matter of the topic under consideration. Um, I think Rob Almeida has um, has joined us. Um, answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. And uh, the board always welcomes written comments at any time instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. We'll now go to the first item on the agenda. Uh, let me advise you that we have a very full calendar tonight, and so it may take um, uh, time, but I'd like to move as quickly through our subjects as possible. So now we will consider the definitive subdivision public hearing. Um, in accordance with provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one, and the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations to review the definitive subdivision plan application of EMS Development for improvement of a new roadway and for the creation of four new building lots at eighty X and ten fifty-three Main Street, parcels number thirty-seven thirty and thirty-seven thirty-four. And so I would like representatives of the applicant to please identify themselves.
My name's Matt Seppi from EMS Development, and I'm here tonight with Paul Kirchner and Chris Alvin.
Great. Um, unfortunately, um, time didn't allow for um, presentation of um, any conditions of approval for this uh, evening. I, I apologize for my optimism on the timeframe. However, I think we can make use of this time to revisit and review progress and revisions you've made regarding your plan, um, especially as it relates to requested waivers, um, specifically the width of right-of-way, pavement widths, horizontal curves, um, lack of inclusion of a cul-de-sac, sidewalks, and trees. And I don't know if Elizabeth, you'd like to highlight which of these items we might want to begin with?
Um, I, I think it would probably be best if um, Matt can just give, you know, a five-minute update on um, you know, the, the slight revisions that were made from the last time, and then I can walk the board through the requested waivers, um, and the board can have, you know, a conversation about those waivers. Uh, and then I did um, meet with um, Matt today, and um, Linda's graciousness, it, you know, I was not able to draft the decision for the board for tonight, so my apologies, but um, and talked to Matt about at least um, having the board's input on those requested waivers, and then um, he has agreed to grant the board an additional time extension so that the app, the public hearing can be continued to your April second meeting for um, what I promise will be the um, draft decision.
Okay, great. Mr. Seppi?
Um, sure. Good evening. Uh, would we have the ability, either Heather or Paul, to call up the latest set of plans that we submitted, please?
Yep, uh, Paul, if you have those ready, you're welcome to share the screen.
I'm actually not able to share my screen right now, I'm sorry, that's I, I also would have my camera on, but I'm sitting in my car, uh, so I look a little scary, I think.
Um, give me two seconds.
Okay.
And I think if we could just go to sheet four, that would probably be the easiest one to show the few adjustments we've made. Thank you. So, since our last meeting, we have um, basically made about just three adjustments to what the plans were. Uh, the first two are, are pretty minor. Um, the first one being there is a utility pole that is out at the front of Main Street and where Harness Lane would be. And the engineering department asked us to just relocate it a little further away from the entrance of the road for line of sight than where we had it previously. So we have just modified slightly the location of that utility pole to comply with their request. Um, secondly, on Lot Three, we originally had the domestic water service coming from the water main that is going down Saddle Road. And the water department has requested that we bring that um, domestic water connection down to the main. So uh, we've made that adjustment accordingly. And lastly, uh, at our previous meeting, the suggestion we had of uh, introducing a sidewalk on the development that would provide access from Main Street through Harness Lane up to Old Bridge Road. And we have uh, put that in and shown where that would come across, come up Harness Lane and across Saddle Road and out to Old Bridge Road. Um, I do have some thoughts on that if uh, if Elizabeth, you feel now is the appropriate time to talk about that, or maybe we could get suggestions on that later?
That, that's fine.
Okay, great. So uh, in our work to try to establish the best way to get the sidewalk in place, we currently are showing a paved sidewalk with curves that's going from Main Street up Harness Lane and out to Old Bridge Road. Uh, as we get to Old Bridge Road, you can see that the sidewalk on Old Bridge Road is actually on the other side of the street. So, we have tried to identify like what would be the appropriate type of connection that might be able to take place, and we're gonna probably have to have some further discussions with engineering if we kept that as a paved sidewalk all the way out to Old Bridge Road. So I would like to make a suggestion for the board to consider, and we had talked about this a little bit at the previous meeting of we maybe um, could consider having the sidewalk follow along where our paved road is on the project, and then potentially transitioning it from a paved sidewalk more to um, like a a stardust pack or stone pack that we had talked about, so it'd be a little bit um, less inclusive on how we connect out on Old Bridge Road as far as trying to connect to the sidewalk that's across the street. And I also think it would probably be a little less intrusive for the two abutters on the side of the paper road um, to have it be more of a, a stone-type path than being an actual paved sidewalk. So the sidewalk, we would keep in place for where our roadway is, but where our roadway ends, we would just transition to a, a, a more of a stone-type path that we, again, we could do in star pack or whatever appropriate material we feel would work best.
Oh, um, I will add, um, and the reason um, it was my suggestion that I would like um, engineering to um, to look at the possibility for this crosswalk here because it may not be feasible given where, where it is on the block and their requirements and standards that they have to meet um, when placing in a crosswalk. So um, I feel that, you know, the conversation with engineering needs to, to happen, um, whether this can happen or not in this location. If it cannot happen in this location, um, then it's, um, it's my feeling that um, the improvements that would be needed off-site, um, because the town only has one, yeah, sidewalk on one side of this public road, um, would go beyond the scope of uh, this project. Um, so that's what, the one reason for the conversation, but then I um, I did ask, you know, suggest that Matt discuss with the board, um, having this beginning portion be the hard-packed gravel and um, so that it, you know, did have more of, you know, that less intrusive um, appearance for the, you know, the two abutters. Um, and um, but would still allow, you know, pedestrians and bikes. I think the jog in the sidewalk is um, in the pathway is definitely helpful. Um, you know, as especially um, I, I forgot, was it Linda where we were talking today? Just the, the speed of people on electric scooters and um, having, having the jog is, is a nice um, break in a straight path, so uh, that was um, my suggestions.
I would just like to pause and um, indicate that Abby Flanagan has joined the meeting.
Hello, everyone.
Okay, um, yeah, so would you like um, Elizabeth, would you like us to provide some feedback and thought about this? Or would you like to go on and um, with other issues and, and then come back to this?
I think the board can, you know, discuss the, the concept about the sidewalks and then move on, then I can move on to the other waivers.
Okay, um, does anyone, would anyone like to weigh in? I apologize, I can't see everybody at once, so don't feel shy to just um,
I, I, I think having a less formal sidewalk at that extension of the roadway would be appropriate, okay? I am concerned about how we handle the crossing of Old Bridge Road, and like, that's a question for the engineering department. I don't know that we want to have a sidewalk ending at Old Bridge Road without some way to cross to the other side, I guess. I think the idea of having that less, be less formal is, is a good one.
Uh, any other board members who'd like to um, express an opinion or make a, have any questions?
Uh, yes, uh, it's always a tension between providing um, good handicapped access and not being too intrusive on the environment, but looking at a map of the surrounding area, there aren't, one can take the next road to uh, uh, towards Route Two to get between um, main streets in this area, so there would only be a inconvenience to a very small number of local people having to go all the way down Old Bridge to Main Street in order to get out toward Route Two by a longer route. So it does seem reasonable to me to have a hard-packed surface here. I, not, looking at the jog in the sidewalk, which is in fact an excellent idea, I can't help but see that it leaves a significant area toward the southwest of the plan, if it's pointing north, which it isn't even slightly north, it's not up, so to the south, which would be a really nice place to throw in a small number of small trees to allow them to grow up and fill in that area and make up for numerous trees that we can see will be taken out by the sidewalk and the water main going through in that area. And um, maybe I should have brought that up when we speak about trees later, but it has to do with both.
I, I, I have a, I have a recommend, a suggestion on that topic as well when we get to it, so.
Okay, is um, is there anyone else on the board who'd like to comment? No, then I, I think um, we could go to your next uh, item, um, Elizabeth, and, and we'll just take public comment all at the um, end.
Okay, um, so um, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop sharing this. The next item is um, the list of waivers. Um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna start at the bottom since um, Sue brought up, um, brought up the trees. So the subdivision rules and regulations require trees to be planted um, spaced at intervals of approximately fifty feet on center and no closer than thirty-five feet um, for the length of the roadways um, on, on both sides. And um, what we have found um, over the, I'm gonna say the past, you know, ten, you know, at least ten years, uh, is that in many cases, especially with these smaller um, developments, that having trees, you know, equally spaced along the roads, uh, the road, it, it doesn't fit in with, you know, either the landscape or the character of, you know, the roadway. And um, my suggestion to um, the board is with this requested waiver um, is to, there's, there is a, and Matt can work with his engineer to determine what the, the number of tree, street trees required, um, based on this requirement is. Um, you know, I'm gonna say, let's say it's twenty, you know, twenty-five trees. Um, to have the board um, grant a waiver to the spacing requirement and to allow that number of trees um, to be installed after the roadway is um, and utilities and stormwater drainage is in place um, after um, the lots and the homes where they're going to be located. Um, and to allow um, Matt's landscape architect to work with myself to go out there and appropriately locate trees, as Sue pointed out. That one spot that probably would be a nice place to put maybe three trees that can, you know, grow up in a little bit more dense, and then in other locations um, along the, the roadway. Uh, so that they still buffer the road and um, help, you know, provide shade in the future and um, you know, provide some screening. But not have them be equally spaced at fifty feet or, you know, thirty-five feet um, and provide that waiver to that requirement with that added condition.
Well, this sounds like a great plan to me, except that I will note that a tree is tremendous um, amenity to any property, and I would want to see that each house lot was provided with at least one street tree, or if for some reason a street tree couldn't be placed in the right-of-way, that they be offered the opportunity to have one placed in their front yard, unless they're, unless you see some reason we couldn't do that, Elizabeth?
Um, no, there's absolutely no reason why the board um, couldn't allow that, that flexibility. Um, what I, you know, will point out is, while for the subdivision roadway um, construction, the utilities and stormwater drainage, the tree preservation by law does, does not apply. Um, and um, Matt and his engineer provided a plan that shows this is the area of grading required for the subdivision, and then the areas outside of that, the individual grading that's going to be required for the development of each house lot, the tree preservation by law does apply. So, you know, there is going to be a, you know, additional trees required to be planted as part of the project in a, in a different phase, under a different requirement. Um, so that, you know, that also makes sense that in the end, you know, there is this flexibility, um, you know, to plant trees in an appropriate place and not just because the rules, subdivision rules and regs say, you know, every fifty feet, you know, or thirty-five feet along the street.
Okay, thanks.
Are there other comments from board members? Then I would maybe ask Elizabeth if we could put that on our long list of things to address at town meeting and perhaps change the way the um, requirement for street trees is in the future. Um, uh,
Yeah, that will definitely be, yeah, that will definitely be one of those items um, for the updates to the subdivision rules and regulations, which um, I would just clarify, do not require town meeting approval. Um, that's just a public hearing process, but that is definitely on, on my, you know, high on my list. Um, because um, I don't, I don't think that manner of planting street trees. Um, you know, it was, it was, it was done in, you know, the fifties when large subdivisions were being put in, and you can see where it was done back then. Um, but I don't, I don't necessarily think it's um, uh, appropriate. I, I think trees need to be cited where a tree is gonna do best, not just because the words say so. But that is definitely on the list.
Very good.
Just a quick additional comment on that. Um, I think currently we're, we're probably about three trees short of what the requirement is, and that's what is, is causing us to request the variance. We do have some street trees that are on the plan, and I, I believe we're about three short of where we need to be. But if we consider, as Sue had made the suggestion previously, we do some trees up past the roadway up where that water main is going, I do feel it's probably gonna get us up to the quantity that would have been required just in a, a little bit different fashion of spacing them every fifty feet. And uh, I also did walk the site with my landscape architect, Kim Ahern, and she, she has a similar feeling of if she can see once the infrastructure is in place and where the houses are gonna go and can better visualize it, she felt that she would be able to uh, work with the butters to better define where some trees may go along with the street trees to come up with a better conceptual design.
Great. Thank you. Okay, um, Elizabeth, any other um, uh, items that you'd like to discuss tonight?
Um, so just the, you know, the, quickly the rest of the waivers. Um, the, the bylaw requires a sidewalk on um, one side of the streets and um, not the project before you has a sidewalk on only one of those streets. The other um, short street saddle road, um, he is requesting a waiver that there not be a sidewalk on that. There's, I think there's only one house or is there one or two off saddle?
Two.
Two. Um, so uh, that's the other waiver. The, the um, waiver requested under item one and item two have to do with the um, first one being design standards. Um, and these are waivers that the board has granted in other similar um, projects for road improvement projects where the road right-of-way layout um, is considered, you know, either, you know, paper street. And um, the minimum width of a right-of-way is fifty feet. Um, and this right-of-way was laid out before that requirement, it's at forty feet. Uh, the waiver is um, I feel justified. The applicant does not have the ability in some of those late locations to make the right-of-way wider to fifty feet. Uh, and that also um, talks about the radius of the horizontal curve and the requirement for the laying out of a cul-de-sac and a full cul-de-sac turnaround. Um, that is, you know, also not feasible, given that this is a um, paper street that was previously, you know, laid out and recorded. So um, those are the, all of the waivers that are being requested. So if um, if just some guidance from the board, um, you know, whether they feel the requested waivers are um, can, you know, are justified, then I can move forward um, in, in quick fashion on a decision.
In terms of um, the cul-de-sac, um, just would like to make sure that there's adequate um, space for snow removal to take place. Um, I don't remember where that was outlined. Can you refresh my memory?
Um, I can. Um, so for the snow removal, um, there's the whole right, right side of the road um, as you come down. And then at the um, at the end, um, there's snow removal off this side and snow removal, you know.
We are not seeing what you are looking at.
Oh, sorry. How's that?
Oh, much more visible.
Okay, um, so um, snow removal, there's the right side of um, Harness Lane. And there is also um, with no sidewalk on, on either side of Saddle Road. Um, there is the ability for snow at that side, and then also at the end um, at the T turn, the Y turnaround.
But the turnaround would be necessary for fire equipment, yes?
So, so the, the, the edge of, the edge of the turnaround ends right about here, the edge of pavement. So there would be this area
Okay.
Off the pavement. And then both sides of the street and one side of Harness Lane.
So um, in terms of waivers, are there any other questions from the members of the planning board on waivers? I'm sorry, I guess I can't.
No, nobody is, nobody speaking up or raising their hands.
And I, 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 excuse me, I assume, Linda, I'm sorry, I assume that this has all been signed off on by the fire department. You'll, you'll give us those.
Yes.
Okay, because obviously the, the turnarounds and all that stuff have all been approved, so, okay.
Yes.
And, and then are there other issue, any other issues anyone would like to raise, um, since we have um, a little time, a couple minutes here that um, has, have not been addressed in past meetings? Or I, I know I had one question, um, and I wasn't sure, um, there is um, a retaining wall, and I wasn't sure if we had answered the questions. I think the engineering may have had them as well as to how high that wall would be. Have you been able to um, make any judgments on that yet in terms of your planning?
Uh, on our individual lot plans, we do show some potential retaining walls based on the layouts of the houses when we go for uh, permitting of the individual house lots. But, or the infrastructure and road, um, there aren't any retaining walls that will be going in. Great for that. The retaining walls would be more specific to when we go for building permits on the individual lots.
Fine, thank you. Anything else from the planning board? Um, then perhaps we can open this for um, any questions or comments from the public. And um, again, if you could, if anyone has questions, use the raised hand function. Um, I see Andy, Andy McClatchy.
Hi, my name's Andy McClatchy. I live on Old Bridge Road. I'm in a butter for, and I've lived here for thirty years. I have a very quick question. I was very glad to hear you talk about the crosswalk because I was going to ask that question. Um, I would imagine, uh, as you know, Old Bridge Road is very dangerous at many times of the day. Um, and I would imagine that a cross, a crosswalk would be important, I would think. And I would imagine it would be important to talk to the fire department and emergency vehicle people about that because they too drive very rapidly up and down. drive very rapidly up and down that road multiple times a day, that was my only question whether that's been thought about, that's all.
Yeah, I think, I, that's a really good point, thank you. Um, any additional questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you so very much, um, for being here and we look forward to seeing you on April. Oh, sorry, Elizabeth.
Nope, sorry, um, so the, um, uh, Matt has granted, uh, the board a time extension to April fifth.
Okay, so I do I need to make a motion that we can continue the hearing?
Um, so you need to make a motion to continue the hearing.
Hearing of the definitive.
Seven oh five on April second and accept the time extension, uh, to um, April fifth.
Okay, I move that we continue the hearing of the definitive subdivision plan, um.
That's, that's all you have to say.
Okay, for EMS development, for the improvement of a new roadway and for the creation of four new building lots at ADX and ten fifty-three Main Street, parcels thirty-seven thirty and thirty-seven thirty-four to April second. Twenty twenty-four to seven oh five PM and accept an ex, time extension for the application to April fifth. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Um, and, uh, then let's, uh, take a poll of votes, Mark Giddings.
Yes.
Sue Felshen.
Aye.
Abby Flanagan.
Aye.
Andrew Boardman.
Aye.
Rob Almeida.
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh. Okay, and then now we will turn to, um, our next agenda item, uh, which is the recommendation to this ZBA of Concord Housing Development Corporation for a special permit and site plan review under zoning bylaws sections ten, eleven point six and eleven point eight for a five-unit planned residential development at four oh six Old Marlboro Road. Parcel twenty-seven thirty-two. And could, uh, representatives of the applicant please identify themselves?
Yes, good evening, Rich Harrington from Dillson Roy, can you hear me?
Oh, hi, hello, Rich, um, and would you like, um, to begin by providing us with an update, I think you've submitted a, um, recently a new plan.
Uh, certainly, uh, as you recall, this is for affordable housing. And we have submitted everything back to the Board of Health as far as updating the sewage disposal plans as needed. And we believe those are acceptable pending the outcome of this, of this proceedings in the ZBA and assigning street address numbers. And basically the septic systems have been cited around the proposed pavement in the house sites, so uh, we've updated the drainage, we have a full stormwater set and an updated plan set from Dillson Roy. And we've received comments back from engineering that all the comments have been addressed, except for a couple that I would just like to mention. Um, they had comment number twelve, which was some site train triangles as far as seeing cars approaching and we can provide an additional sheet for that as far as that distance, we did have labels on the plan, but we can expand that further. Uh, one other minor one was talking about visitor parking and, as you know, with this private driveway, um, if people do visit, they can park on the private driveway on one side and then, um, and then leave. It's typical for that to happen, so there's no specific visitor parking designated or we believe required for that. And then is part of the conditions, you know, the Carpet Housing Authority will assume responsibility for the long-term operation maintenance at the end of the project. And that all that paperwork will be handled internally between town staff and the applicant. And so we believe we're at a point where we've addressed all the comments. Um, and just need to kind of allow Elizabeth her time to, to look at everything properly and, and bring back a recommendation of approval letter to the board for the ZBA to deliberate.
So can I, um?
Yes, Liz, are you, uh, representing the applicant, please, um?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm Liz Russ, so I'm here for the CHDC and I'm also here with Lee Smith, who's the president of the CHDC. So I just wanted to, maybe some people aren't familiar with the project, just Rich has done an excellent job of preparing the plans and that level of detail, but I just wanted to provide a little bit of a higher level, just to remind um, and to highlight where the project came from. Um, this, this, uh, the affordable housing piece was a component of a larger project that was a town project to purchase, um, almost seven acres of land um, for open space and housing. There were six acres purchased for open space and one acre purchased for housing, so that fifteen percent of the land purchased was for housing. Housing was requested to come into the project and really I think that the project wouldn't have happened without the housing portion. It was really a collaborative effort between housing and open space. And it was very much, um, you know, both parties needed each other. Um, it was a joint part, uh, joint partnership in the funding as well. Um, the project went to town meeting for both the open space and the housing portion. Housing, um, you know, spent a little bit more, I think thirty-six percent of the, the land was purchased with housing funds. But it was really a joint venture. It was always envisioned to have, um, five units of housing and I think it was constrained in that way. It was committed to the community that there would be five units of housing, so that was really the plan going in. There was the two, um, the two apartments in the, the front building. And for, um, for quite some time, that's been, uh, discussed that that would be given to the housing authority. Um, and that they would, uh, rent those out. And in fact, one is in the process of being rented out, um, hopefully for April. Um, and then the, the back three units would be ownership units in a condominium, uh, you know, manner of ownership. Um, so that's just a high level perspective of the project, so it has some, some history, it has a lot of a, you know, joint community support and collaboration between the town and the open space piece and, and we're here just talking about the affordable housing portion, but it has a lot of tentacles to other parts as well. And I just wanted to be sure that that, uh, was something that everyone knew, you might not, some people might not have been living through all that over the last, you know, these projects take quite some time to, to go through.
Thank you, thank you for that background, um, do you have any, um, uh, visual or diagram that shows, um, this location with, in the the, um, greater expansive property, including the trail and including a budding properties? Because this is really, um, a very isolated picture that is shown and I, I'm not sure that it gives a full um, view of, um, what you've just described so that people can see that there is open space, it looks like, um, you, you, with, with it being so cut off and just giving a, a view of just the immediate properties, I wasn't sure if you had any document that could give us some broader perspective as, as you've just described.
I see Rich looking, are you finding?
The cover sheet of the plan set that we submitted has that.
Yeah, when we did the, um, the, you know, the closing and we, uh, we split the lot between the open space and the, um, the housing portion.
Maybe the assessors map that we pulled up?
Yeah, let's see, I'm sure we can have something here. Sorry.
If, if not, um, I'm sure, uh, if people have questions, uh, perhaps we can continue to look for that, so, um, Elizabeth, um, are there some comments you'd like to make or some initial thoughts, uh, in terms of things we should review this evening?
Um, I know the last time the applicant was before the board, um, the board had discussed, um, the amount of, um, pavement and parking, and so I don't know if Rich wants to bring up the plans and, um.
I'm sorry, I just threw this up here, I, I don't know if this is the right time. Uh, this was the plan that, um, was, was filed at the, the closing here, so you could see the rail trail, you could see, here's that, the housing piece, the little, the little, you know, piece there, and then here's the whole open space and the butters there, is that, is that helpful?
Mm-hmm, and, and I think, has there been some fencing added, um, since we last spoke with you as well?
We have not added any fencing.
No, okay.
I think we, Liz, I think we agreed, I don't know if it ended up on the current version of plans, but was to effectively extend one additional fence panel from.
Yes, on the plan, there's definite fencing on the plan, right, but we haven't added.
It extends closer to Old Marlboro Road.
We haven't physically added, uh, fencing, but we have planned for fencing, of course.
And, and can you show on the larger plan that you just showed where that fencing actually would go, um, in terms of? It's.
Yeah, I think Rich is gonna do just that.
You able to see the, see the plan set now?
Yep, mm-hmm.
Okay, so kind of show the locusts, it was two locust plan requirements. And I'll stop moving the cursor. Um, so we're highlighted right now with the one acre parcel of four oh six. Um, above at the top of the screen, you see Main Street where the bike trail comes down. So this two B is all the protected land and then the bike trail is eighty feet wide, at least, then there's some homes on Quartet Street over here, budding. And then Upland Road at this location here. So that's where the context of where it is, um, we were extended an eighty-foot width from four oh six behind existing house down along the bike trail. And where we done, we have a right of way and a road off of Upland, that's been protected land. Um, so as far as the plan itself, the big picture. Just get to the grading plan.
So I think that will show the fence right there nicely.
Right, so beginning at the face of the garage of the butter, we're gonna begin a fence. And traveling down the, sorry about that, traveling down the property boundary to the back corner, we'll have a fence at that location. We'll have ten feet of lawn and then we move the driveway over. So be beginning beginning at the entrance, we'll have a utility pole that we're gonna relocate to the left. We're going to provide entirely new sidewalk along the frontage, all the way over to the concrete where the bike trail is. We're going to come in and we move the three, zoning requires three spaces for the two existing apartments. So we move those over so that when they pull into their spaces, the headlights gonna shine right on the face of the building, the side of the building. And screen that from any butters, they'd have a walkway up to their front steps and a walkway to the street. We'll have typical mailboxes along the back of the sidewalk and we'd have a street sign that shows four oh six Old Marlboro Road. We have a continuous twenty-foot wide pavement to this first single-family home, it's building C. Unit C, building one, we have two parking spaces proposed, so that we narrowed the pavement to that location there. And then as you proceed over, we have building two, and then we have two parking spaces, this location here. Sorry about that, and then I'm sure that in the building at the back, we have two parking spaces there as well, so we're able to narrow the parking at each house, we reduced the length of the entire driveway by a few feet per the request of engineering. And then the turning radius is twenty-foot wide also, which was, uh, so we did a turning template for the fire department to look at it. Um, similar to the Stamsky plane you saw with Matt Seppi. Um, I had worked there and Matt was one of my clients back then also. Whether we have twenty feet of pavement or eighteen feet of pavement that he had on his plan, the fire truck turning radius works on this plan also. Um, so it's, it's, um, the similar approach is that goes. Uh, we have snow storage area shown along the property. Um, we have a formalized drainage system in the middle underneath the pavement to uh, minimize the, any disturbance for the shoulders and things of that nature. And then at the end of the plan, we have erosion control details, et cetera, once it focuses in on the plan. So we'd have a stabilized construction entrance coming in. And we'd build the road and then the septic systems, wherever there's not pavement, we, we're able to break the septic trenches into pieces to wrap around the houses in the, in the pavement. So we've made the adjustments accordingly per the request of, of your comments and also the engineering department.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any questions or, um, comments, um, on a part of the planning board?
Yes, I recall, I'm looking at my list of things from last time, we just covered screening, uh, there was a question of laying conduit for electric car charging to, um, the driveways. And possibly providing charging stations as well, what is the status of that?
Um, so we, we added a shed, an eight-by-eight shed for each single-family building, one here at the back and then one at closest to driveway for building two.
Thanks, cause I was gonna ask that too.
Uh, so if there is an area to, if bicycles are purchased and used, they can be stored in the shed outside. Um, if any charging station for vehicles, there'll be a outlet on the outside of the building closest to the nearest space for, for all each building. And then they can pull the, the cord off the side of the building on the outside to the vehicle. And then it can retract back into the, into the, the, the thing on the side of the building. Um, for that, so though each building can have its own roughed-in external area for a charging station.
Right, so this exterior outlet, that's going to be, um, a standard outlet or is it gonna be some sort of medium-speed charging, excuse my ignorance of electricity?
Uh, it's gonna meet the, the minute, the requirements of the current building, building and electrical code when the buildings are constructed to have it. I guess that's the question, uh, do you want to have it just to be roughed in so it's ready, should they purchase electric vehicle, then they can place the charger on the, on the building itself. Um, have it ready for a connection.
I see. Uh, thanks, that was all I had on my list.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else from the planning board, um, why don't we see if there's any um, public comments or questions? Um, I see a, um, Keith Bergman.
Thanks very much, Keith Bergman, fifty-six White Avenue, uh, speaking as chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, first I want to thank Liz Russ for her um, uh, summary, her excellent summary of how we got to where we are, but, uh, today. Uh, and it, uh, it, and it's, this affordable housing project is very important to the town. The trust, uh, has, uh, appropriate, has, uh, al- already committed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards, uh, this project, uh, which went towards the acquisition of the property. The trust is also entertaining what we expect to be over a million dollars, uh, in additional trust funds that will be needed to build this. Um, uh, these, uh, three additional units in order for us to be able to deliver on the promise to town meeting and to ourselves that we have five affordable, uh, housing units, uh, due to this property, the three new ones plus the existing two families. So I'm very pleased to see this proceeding, uh, you know, we're really close to getting over ten percent. Uh, and we're only one unit away, we are, as, as Liz was telling us earlier, we are at nine point nine nine seven percent. Uh, and just need one more unit. Uh, and just need one more unit uh to get us over. And so we're very anxious to have. Uh, this this project and other projects we're working on proceed. And thanks so much for your support.
Thank you. Um, any additional public comment or questions? Um, I see Elizabeth, I don't consider you public, Elizabeth, but chime in please.
Um, so the only um last outstanding issue is um I need to have a discussion with the fire department. Um, on how they wish to um address these units, similar with other PRD projects. Um, they have requested that um the road actually be named and the units. Off that um new roadway be addressed. For emergency um response purposes off that that road. Um, so that's. Um, I know there's been conversations with um. The um with the applicant and uh their teams on that and with discussion, but um. That is um how the fire department wishes to address them because it is not just a single house lot, it's three house lots. Um, and uh they uh from an emergency response, um. How they go about addressing for that is um that's a conversation I will have with. Uh, the fire department uh tomorrow, so. Um, that still may be something that the Concord Housing Development Corporation is gonna have to um. Uh, weigh in on, uh, but that is, um, I mean, I don't feel that's a an outs, you know, a. Um, an issue that can't be resolved one way or the other and uh shouldn't stop the project from moving forward, but it is something that still needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Um, are there any?
I can commit, sorry. Lee Smith, CHDC, uh, I was just gonna say, we we I can commit on behalf of CHDC that will resolve that to the party of satisfaction.
Great. Any additional questions or comments? If not, um, thank you to everyone on the affordable housing front. We're. Um, very much great fans of yours and hope that you keep us very busy in the future. So congratulations on this uh moving forward. Appreciate your being here. Thank you.
Thank you all.
So Linda, at this point, um, the board does need to send a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Um, I don't know if the board um wants to designate a member. Um, to work with me on the drafting of that recommendation letter or whether the board wants to. Um, review that letter before it gets as as a board review that letter. Um. Before it gets sent to the board.
I'm glad to I'm glad to work with you um on behalf of the CHTC and work with them as needed. If that's what you're asking.
No, I I think she meant. You're you're an honorary on everything, Liz, but but yeah, we'll we'll pick someone um from the board. I I would um ask your. Your meeting with the zoning board of appeals is on the twenty eighth. And our next meeting is um April second, so we um really probably should designate someone to work. With you and or then circulate to the board, but but I I think that probably um. I would look for uh volunteers and um given the amount of. Do I have one in in Mark? If not, Sue, you've been.
I can volunteer.
Very interested. Would you mind doing that? That would be excellent. I I think um Elizabeth probably will. Get you a very clean draft um anyway, but.
I'm I'm learning.
Okay, great, that that would be helpful so that we could um in a timely fashion. Be responsive to the needs of the zoning board to see this. Great. Okay, um. See if I can. Get back to the agenda. Um, and so, um. Now, um, do we need a motion, Elizabeth, or for that? Or can we just proceed?
Um, I. I think it would be preferable if um. You know, it it sounds like all the board members are unanimous in supporting the project and recommending. Uh, that it be granted. And I think a motion to that effect and to authorize. Sue Felshen to work with myself on the drafting of a recommendation letter, which um that recommendation letter will. Pull um, you know, standard conditions um for other PRDs and um any of the recommendations and conditions from town staff. In their comment letters.
Okay, so I I move that um. Uh. Elizabeth Hughes, the town planner in coordination with um board member Sue Felshen. Um, draft um. A recommendation to the zoning board of appeals with regard to um. The Concord Housing Development Corporation Special Permit and Site Plan Review under zoning by law sections ten, eleven point six and eleven point eight. For a five unit planned residential development at four oh six Old Marlboro Road, parcel twenty seven thirty two. A recommendation for um.
Uh, the the special permit be granted.
That the special permit uh be granted um as reviewed um at our meeting this evening and. Um, as um reflecting all standard conditions for such um approvals. Um, is that good enough then?
Perfect.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, and we'll start with then Andrew.
Yes.
Rob Almeida.
Yes.
Abby Flanagan.
Hi.
Uh, Sue Felshen.
Hi.
Mark Giddings.
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. Thank you very much. Um, and thank you also, Sue, for being um so so helpful as usual. So now I believe we will um move on to um administrative business. Um, first, we will have. Uh, general public comment. Public comment is limited up to fifteen minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to anyone speaker. Public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda, but are that are in the in the purview of the planning board. And looking on Zoom, I will see if there's anyone wishing to raise their hand um for public comment. And if not, then I think we will go on to a discussion um with the Economic Vitality Committee. Um. And uh let's uh see if who is here from the Economic Vitality Committee looking.
I'm here.
Oh, Mike Lawson, who's the chair. Um, excellent, and I I hope um I'm sure you have good company. I um I'm. Very much welcome um this ability to um. Continue uh and broaden our uh dialogue with the Economic Vitality Committee. Uh, we've worked in the past, I think, with. Um, some projects such as um food trucks, um, but but I think we we uh may have uh. Slowed down a little bit um in terms of trying to work collaboratively in um to um. Fashion um or work together on zoning amendments that could be beneficial. Uh, to the um businesses and commercial efforts of um groups throughout Concord. So I think it's um just a very. Um, good opportunity to um get on board with thinking at the Economic Vitality Committee and. Sort of plan out what um. Uh, projects that we can be helpful with and work on together. Um, as we move forward really to perhaps town meeting. Twenty twenty five. So I'm gonna turn this over to you, Mike, to let us know what your thoughts and interests might be and. How best we can collaborate collaborate. Thank you for being being here tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me. It's nice to see everybody. Mike Lawson, sixteen ninety five. Lowell Road, a member of the Economic Vitality Committee and speaking for the committee. I would also note for the record, I'm a member of the. Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, so uh I think what I would like to do is just sort of quickly tell you the four areas that the Economic Vitality Committee is working on that'll kind of drive their efforts. And then focus in on one that I think, well, two that will uh actually directly affect your committee. So the four. Major areas that we're working on are communication and marketing. Which is just an effort to uh make sure we're understanding all of the concerns that get raised by the business community and that we're able to then. Uh, publicize those things that would advance the business community in town. Uh, the second area is recruitment and retention of businesses in Concord. I think this is the one that uh. I think I'm I'm really quite interested in, and that is keeping track of what we have in town, what the vacancies are. But more importantly, I think it's being a little bit more proactive and aggressive and thinking about what kind of businesses would prosper in town. We know a lot about the underlying economics of the town, the size of the town, where it draws people for business. And I think the committee ought to be doing a much better job in trying to. Articulate and then even try to find businesses that would would prosper and do well. In town. And I'll I'll give you just an example of the kind of business, and that is you're often with the fine restaurant, Fear Rawls, which is in town on Walden Street. Uh, that's not, we're not their first place that they've done business. They opened in Newton and now they have uh other restaurants. So that's an example of a kind of business that we should be thinking about. And that is businesses that have prospered in other communities and we're looking to expand. That's just an example of how we could be a little bit more proactive. The fourth area or the the fourth area, but the 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 third one I'll tell you about tonight is Concord two fifty. And that is we're working with the Concord two fifty to articulate and try to understand the impacts these celebrations are gonna have on the business community. Beth Williams, our tourism manager, had a meeting on uh Monday night at six o'clock at uh in the library. To try to begin uh getting in connection with all the business units and helping them understand what was happening and raise issues that might affect them. As we think about the significant uh. Celebrations that are gonna happen around April nineteenth and uh twenty twenty five. And then the area that I think most directly impacts upon your organization, the first of two anyway. Is policy and regulations. And in this, the uh Economic Vitality Committee is uh thinking about. Potential zoning changes that would be uh we believe helpful to the business community. And we don't have these fully developed yet, but this is a kind of initiative that when we have it a little bit more fully developed, we would want to engage with you folks. To hope to get you on board, but to bring you up to people, what we're trying to do so we can try to work collaboratively. So let me just quickly go over there. There are three of them that are uh uh initially on our minds. One is allowing retail as an accessory use. In industrial areas. You've probably heard of this before. I think that's an issue that would be beneficial to the overall business climate. In Concord. Uh, uh, right now, it that that's not permitted, so we need to uh be a zoning change. The second is one that I'm not sure we're gonna be able to do much about, uh. But it's trying to think about looser regulations on tourist homes like Airbnb or uh others. Uh, during the celebratory period uh in twenty twenty five. There's gonna be likely a very acute shortage of housing, given the hotels that we have in the area. And it might be uh useful to explore how we might loosen those regulations for that temporary period. It's complicated cuz there are also, of course, state regulations that I'm sure you know about. But that's on our on our minds. And the last is parking requirements and business districts. And I know there's a lot of work going on about parking, but that's something that we are going to want to uh. Pay attention to and as it develops, uh, each of those is likely to make its way to the uh planning board. So there's one other. Do I have time for a quick additional?
Of course, we always make time for you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Uh, uh, as I said before, I'm a member of the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And I see Keith is still online along with uh Lee and Liz. Uh, we developed a housing production plan, which is something that we have to do, and we did it, and we did it well. But one of the consequences of developing that is that we, on a quarterly basis, bring together all of the organizations in town that are connected to housing. And we have a discussion, bring everybody up to speed on which or what organizations are doing, but. Uh, we identify issues that we might commonly work on. And I think that uh all of the folks who were here from the housing group would would. Support me in saying that that has been a very positive development uh for the housing community. Uh, it had a very practical uh implication this this year with respect to the. Uh, C C P C uh process where there were a lot of housing um. Uh, proposals before the CPC and uh. The housing groups got together and were able to rational rationalize that approach and get that approach back to the CPC. And I think. Because of that, they made a very proposed, very strong allocation of funds to our housing community. So, uh, one of the things the Economic Vitality Committee is going to do is see if we can develop a parallel organization to that uh housing group. And that is on a quarterly basis, pull together all of the organizations in town, both governmental and non-governmental. That are concerned about the business, community, development and vitality in town. So. It would include you folks, of course. It would include the Business Roundtable, the Community Chest. Uh, uh, Economic Vitality Committee and and others, I just like board, obviously. And I think if we got together on this quarterly basis and begin to think through the kinds of things we want to be involved in broadly in town, this would be a positive development for. Economic vitality in Concord. So uh, that that's the additional comment that I wanted to make.
Well, that's excellent. Um, I'll take the prerogative as chair to perhaps respond. Um. Just uh to to your comments, if that would be all right.
Of course.
And and I think that uh there's some great opportunities here to collaborate. Um, I think that um. Your uh outline of uh areas of interest are are terrific. Um, I think that we as well have been working on a. Sort of a parallel thought path in terms of retail as an accessory use in. Industrial zones. Um, I've been hearing that um locally as the Brew Pub. Um, amendment.
Yep.
And I think we won't be the first um out of the box with that, um, but I but I think that um certainly should follow on um. On um food trucks. So I think that that um is something that I believe the community is is probably. Waiting for um with bated breath. So um that's terrific. Um, we've already started down the path. With parking, and I will point out Mr. Giddings is our point person there, and he's gonna be extremely. Much in demand um in in terms of his time, um, and he's developing quite some expertise in that area, and. I'm sure he would be um very um happy to um learn. Uh, a lot from the economic groups and business groups in town. Um, and I think that that. Really should be a very important part in terms of shaping um what we do going forward. So I we welcome that certainly. I'm going to um reserve some judgment and say perhaps we should have more dialogue on tourist homes. Um, it it is.
It's a very controversial issue, and I I don't know exactly, Linda, where the committee will actually come out on any particular plan. But I think it's something that because housing is going to be such an acute shortage during this uh celebratory period. Uh, whether we pick it up and shake it and decide to not do anything with it. You know, I don't have an opinion on that now, but I really think we should engage it and find out what's possible and what's not possible and. And get this done quickly because this is this period is gonna be. because this, this period is going to be upon us before we, before we know it. And our ability to get anything affected here is really, the window is very, very short.
Understood.
Speaking of that, I'm going to bust in and ask if we have to make a zoning change to allow short-term rentals. It's, next year's town meeting will already be too late. We would have to have a special town meeting. You seem to only be talking about a limited time measure, but that would perhaps require a zoning change as well? Or Elizabeth is shaking her head, so perhaps it would not, which would save a lot of effort if you do.
Well, before we start going in to great detail on this, this one issue, I, I would concur with Mike that it is one that has a degree of complexity and a degree of need to discuss that at more length and more depth than we have, I think, available to us this evening, given that we have a pretty full schedule. But I, point well taken, Sue. Elizabeth, if you'd like to make a brief comment, and then again, I don't want to go into too great a detail here, but do be responsive. Yes, please.
So just very quickly, I'm not aware of any ability to temporarily suspend, you know, zoning bylaw requirements, you know, other than we had the emergency order from the governor during the pandemic. So.
Elizabeth, as you may know, I'm architect representative to the 250 Estate Commission for a celebration of the Revolution. And I don't know whether this has any traction, whether it will go anywhere, whether it makes any sense or not. But I think the commission certainly could be in a position to petition the governor to do something so that it wouldn't necessarily need to be a town act. But certainly, the commission wouldn't do that unless the town was supportive of it. So I think, I, I think it's probably right that, I mean, Sue's right that it's not going to happen unless we have a special town meeting. And I don't think there'd be much appetite for a special town meeting for that kind of a change. But perhaps weighing in with the governor might be something that we could think about, if in fact we knew what we wanted to do. And I don't think we should know exactly what we want to do yet. So finally, can we invite Mark to come talk to our committee about parking? Is that a legitimate request of your, your committee?
It's a legitimate request of Mark.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be more than happy to get your input. I'm trying to get as many ideas together as I can. It's a fairly complex issue with several different layers to it, whether it be multifamily, retail, whatever. And we've done a lot of studies on it. Well, we've looked at a lot of studies, so we have some data ourselves. But I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk about it.
I'll be in touch.
You got it.
So with regard to the last issue, Mike, I think this does highlight a real difference between our committees and, and between the natures of our committees. In terms of economic vitality, I think it's very business oriented and one of the great virtues of the business community. It's an ability to be decisive, experimental, move forward quickly, and be willing to change paths as necessary. Unfortunately, the planning process is somewhat different, or shall we say anathetical, in its sort of more linear, deliberative, and making small moves because of the uncertainty and unintended consequences that can result from zoning change. In addition, it has to follow a annual schedule of town meeting primarily in terms of all, all zoning requirements are approved by the town. So I think we need to coordinate as much on the priority scale, but also coordinate in terms of timeframe of how quickly we can move forward with these ideas and, and how we can assure that there is not a, you know, we, we would like to make sure that there is not a degree of frustration from the business community because the planning board is not being cooperative. We intend to be as fully cooperative as we can be, but our, our process is, is a bit, a bit different and we can't move as rapidly, obviously, as, as you can. And we have a great deal of existing zoning and, and legacy that cannot, cannot necessarily be changed quickly. So, so I, I want to make sure we have very open communications and that we perhaps sit down with these various priorities of yours and work out a timeframe so that we can all be successful together. So, so thank you, and, and I, I look forward to taking the next step. And I really like your idea of bringing together the groups. I too have watched from afar what, what the housing community has done. It does seem to be a very, very successful template upon which to get action, communication, and coordination in the town. And, and so would be, I'm sure the planning board would be happy. Unfortunately, we have been down a member this year, and that has unfortunately left us to neglect a couple of important committees that we should have a regular delegate to, so that we need to remedy. And we, we will attempt to try and do that. I'm not going to ask for volunteers now, but everybody can be put on notice. And we'll try and remedy that as well so that you do have a point person. Mark can't do everything for everybody. He has really got his hands full with parking. We, we wish we could clone him. So when you, you get the cloning company in Concord, we'll, we'll try that, but until then.
And I say one closing, thank you very much, and I, I fully appreciate that parts of the business community can move at a different speed than any of the town committees, which are, you know, much more deliberative and have to follow various regulations and laws. But there's still a lot we can do together. And I believe if we work together cooperatively, we can find solutions that are good for the town and good for the business community as well. And I would say that thank you for having me. And at our next meeting, which is later this month, we will be moving to wholeheartedly and enthusiastically support your initiative with respect to the MBTA overlay district. So on behalf of the committee, for your, your staff and, and the whole committee, and you and Madam Chair, you guys have done a fabulous job for the town in shepherding this very complex issue. And I look forward to its passage at town meeting. So thanks very much for having me this evening.
Thank you for your support.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. Any other comments that anyone from the planning board would like to make? So great. We will move along. I think our next discussion will be the feasibility analysis. And Elizabeth, I'm going to ask you to introduce our consultant so we can finally understand the independent analysis that the state demanded of us and which he so courageously has, has developed.
Perfect. So as the board knows, the town was successful in getting a community planning grant through the state. And Mr. Halverson with RKG Associates agreed to do the economic feasibility analysis. And so I'm just, I'm going to turn it straight over to Eric, and he can just give a brief update to the board and so everybody kind of can understand.
Perfect. Thanks, Elizabeth. Hi, everyone. Eric Halverson, I'm a principal with RKG Associates. And we've been working with the town to conduct the economic feasibility, or EFA, for the town of Concord to try and understand if and by how much the town may want to exceed what EO HLC is allowing per the MBTA guidelines, which is 10% affordable set aside at 80% of the area median income. For the chair, I do have a presentation. It's relatively short, but it just sort of walks through the EFA analysis and our findings, if that would be helpful.
Yes, that would be excellent.
Okay, great.
We would all like to finally understand it.
I'll do my best. Okay. Are you able to see that? Great. So just overall, and maybe for those who might be listening and maybe aren't familiar with the EFA and what it is. So under Section 3A, part of that Section 4.B, the affordability requirements that HLC put together as part of the overall MBTA guidelines essentially sets different limitations that cities and towns within the 177 communities that have to follow the MBTA, the MBTA Communities Act. They put restrictions in place on affordability requirements commonly put together in zoning ordinances and bylaws under the term inclusionary zoning. And under the MBTA guidelines, the state through HLC has limited municipalities to basically no more than 10 units within a given development project, a new development project, to be affordable. And then they've capped the income restrictions to 80% of the area median income. And the reason, the reason that, at least that I understand that the state did this was just so, you know, in some cases municipalities aren't trying to play games and use the affordability threshold as a potential barrier to new housing. And I think that was generally their idea with using the 10% threshold and the 80% of AMI threshold as well. But recognizing that some communities may want to or might be able to go above the 10% set aside or potentially below the 80% AMI threshold, they added in a requirement, if you want to go above or below those thresholds, to do what's called an economic feasibility analysis. And I'll talk a little bit about what that analysis is and what we did, and then the results. So the, I'll just refer to it as the EFA because it's a lot easier. But the economic feasibility analysis or the EFA is essentially replicates a development pro forma model, which, which a developer, if they were looking at a parcel of land in a given municipality, trying to understand whether or not a potential development on that land in that community is financially feasible, or, you know, they can actually make money on it. That's essentially what we did. We tried to, you know, we have a model that essentially replicates a developer's pro forma. And it looks at the revenues that would be generated by this hypothetical development project and also the cost to build and operate and pay taxes and maintain the building and things like that. And it compares, essentially compares the revenues of the project to the cost of the project. And if the revenues exceed the cost by certain percentage metrics that we use, then we would deem that project financially viable. And if it does not exceed certain return metrics, then we would deem it not financially feasible. And that's essentially what the state is asking us to do, is to look at it from the lens of a developer and try to understand whether the zoning bylaw, so for you, the MBTA community's zoning bylaw and the districts that you are looking to establish, as well as the inclusionary zoning you potentially want to put forward as part of your MBTA communities to town meeting, that none of those put up sort of extenuating barriers to the financial feasibility of development in the MBTA districts. So the basic modeling components, if you're not familiar with the development pro forma model, there's really, just to boil it down, there's kind of three major components to the model. And within each of these components, we have to make certain assumptions of the different data metrics that go into the model, and I can share, share what those are as well. But basically, it's the construction side of things. So it's the soft costs, so all of the design, the site preparation, the attorneys, the architects, the engineers. It's the hard costs, so the actual building material and the cost to actually build the building and build the parking and everything that's onsite. And then, of course, the land costs or the acquisition costs. If the developer doesn't currently own the property, then they need to buy it from somebody. Once the building is built, the developer will have operating costs. So he'll, he or she will have to pay back the debt and the equity for that project to a bank and their equity partners. They'll also have ongoing costs, ongoing operating costs, such as marketing to make sure they can fill the units that they're building, onsite management fees, repairs to the building, ongoing maintenance, and of course, property taxes to the town. And then on the revenue side, there are the rents or the sale prices, depending on if it's a rental project or a sale project. For the EFA analysis, we only test rental because that's the requirement from HLC. We don't test for sale product. And then depending on the size of the project and the market that it's in, we assume some nominal fee for parking revenue on a monthly basis as well. So again, we compare the revenues to the construction costs and operating costs and see, is this going to be a financially viable project? There's a couple of caveats that I like to point out when we're doing these presentations to communities and boards because there is a little bit of a disconnect between the on-the-ground realities of doing development on a site or in a particular community and what HLC is requesting a consultant to do in the EFA analysis. So a couple of the things I just like to point out is, in reality, when a project is being proposed or say it's coming before you as the planning board, you have a set of architectural plans and a site plan, and you have a development program. And the developer or property owner has done a certain level of due diligence about that site to understand what it's going to take to get that project off the ground, probably before they even come and see you. For the EFA analysis, you know, and as you know, I assume from going through your own MBTA community's process internally for, for Concord, the state is asking us to pretend that nothing exists, that all of the development sites are perfectly flat and perfectly developable, and you run this very convenient build-out model on your parcels, and you get your number of units. So if you're familiar with that process, think about the EFA process in a very similar way. The EFA is sort of agnostic to the on-the-ground site conditions. Really what we're considering is where is the district located and what is the zoning? What's, you know, what's being allowed in terms of the density and the parking requirements, things that we can use to estimate how many units there would be and what the cost to actually build that project would be. So that's really what we're looking at. So our model, our EFA model, it doesn't take into account, you know, infrastructure extensions or upgrades or bedrock or, you know, running into, you know, very odd site conditions. It doesn't take into account demolition of an existing building if we're switching from a single-story commercial use to a multi-story mixed-use building. We're really just pretending that the site is completely flat, perfectly developable, and everybody's ready to go once the zoning gets passed. But in reality, we know development is more difficult than that. The other thing I would say is, all of the cost assumptions, we do our best to estimate those, both using third-party sources that we have and just interviews with developers, not only in your community, but in a lot of other communities where we're working. But there are certain site constraints in some cases that make construction costs more than they might be on a different site. But for the EFA, we have to use averages because we're trying to look at the district as a whole or the districts as a whole in your community. The last thing I would say is the, particularly the interest rate assumptions, the construction cost assumptions, and the financing assumptions, they're all based on a point-in-time analysis of where things stand today. You know, as we know, if you paid attention to interest rates in the last year or two and construction costs in the last year or two, they have fluctuated substantially. And, you know, some of these projects in your district, they might not come to fruition for 10 years, but we can't really predict 10 years from now what construction costs will be, or interest rates will be, or what return expectations are. So I just want to say that all this is kind of a snapshot in time, using the best, most accurate data that we have to run this analysis for you and the other communities that we're running it for. In the report, if you saw the one that I think we had submitted to, to Elizabeth, you had, probably would have seen these different assumptions. These are kind of some of the primary assumptions that community members and others like to take a look at. These both come from work that we did, but also conversations with developers and also an analysis of your community when it comes to things like land costs, for example. These are all the different inputs, as well. Um, these are all the different inputs, as well as the sources of where we got the information from. Um, so you can see here, we have um, land acquisition costs, uh, we have um, the different hard costs. For different types of um, development, and that depends on usually how big the building is. That's a critical assumption for us, um, and I'll talk about. During the results, why certain things work in Concord, but they might not work in other places where we're testing them. We have parking costs in there, um, but then we also have on the revenue side rents, so we pull rents from CoStar. And other market comps um, for new development that's been built either very recently or within the last few years. Um, as I mentioned before, we assume parking income, and then we have all of our financial inputs, like I said, we had the lending rate or the interest rate in there. Which, you know, we know fluctuates, we have the cap rate in there, which we know fluctuates, and then we have return expectations, which tend to fluctuate with costs. As well as with lending costs. RKG, but also um, EO HLC in their guidelines for the EFA. Um, ask us to measure the financial return outcomes. Um, or, you know, what that return percentage is uh, three different ways. Um, just to make sure that, you know, one of these ways isn't necessarily sort of skewing the story, they like to see all three. So there are kind of three common measurements that we use and developers use in the real world to measure how um, how feasible or financially feasible a project might be. Um, there's cash on cash or COC, there's return on cost or ROC, and then there's internal rate of return. Um, the COC and ROC are short-term measures uh, that, that look at the performance of a project. Over the first year or two uh, at full occupancy, the IRR is more of a long-term uh, look at the, uh, we use a ten-year hold period for that. Um, it's just different ways of looking at how feasible a development will be. Um, HLC wants to see that at least some of these work, or they're at least very close to working, so. You'll see on our slides that are coming up, you know, some things are looking good and in some other measures, not so much, but that's okay. All of the project examples that we ran um, came straight from your MBTA compliance model, so what we do is we look at. The build-out numbers for all the parcels in your different districts, and we try to find. Common numbers of units, so you'll see um, uh, in the next slide, in the next two slides. You'll see we tested, you know, a ten, a twenty-five, a fifty, a seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred and fifty, so we try to pick kind of even increments and test. How, how feasible those projects are and what the return metrics are. So for, for the results, um, based on the modeling that we did for Concord. Um, market rate asking rents are really strong in Concord, I'm sure if you're paying attention to housing costs at all, you've. Probably already knew that on the rental side, um. And we do believe that based on the modeling we've done, um, asking rents are strong enough to support projects. With a twenty percent set aside, eighty percent of AMI. Now, I said there would be some caveats in terms of what we ran, and here's where those come in. The reason that the twenty percent likely works in Concord is because um, at least what we saw in your model and your zoning. You're capping your heights at three stories. If you are capping your height at three stories, that means we can assume that those buildings are going to be built using commercial stick frame construction. Which has a much lower per square foot construction cost. Than if you were, say, building four, five, six-story buildings that would require. Steel or concrete podium with wood framing above, there's, you know, roughly, you know, anywhere from a fifty to a hundred dollars. Per square foot difference in those costs, and that makes a big difference um, in terms of how viable a project will be. Um, we also assume that all these projects are going to be done with surface parking instead of structured parking. So surface parking carries a typical cost per space of around five thousand, or structured could be anywhere from a low of maybe thirty-five thousand. To a high of maybe fifty thousand, depending on what kinds of site conditions uh, developer might or property owner might run into. So those two caveats are what um, I think could potentially allow you to go as high as twenty percent. Um, I just want to say to the board, um, some things I've been learning this week, um. I have seen some comments from, not HLC, but from the AG's office come through on some communities where they're looking to do twenty percent. Um, and there's definitely some consternation on the part of the AG of going as high as twenty percent. Um, and I would, you know, personally recommend potentially going lower than that. Um, if you feel comfortable doing that, again, it's totally up to you, but um, I just think with certain site conditions and the way that the. Uh, HLC is asking us to model things, it's, it's modeling the best case condition. Um, and that might not be the case in all of your districts, I don't know them as well as you do. Um, and also just the fact that the build-out of some of these districts could take many years and conditions could change. Um, setting the inclusionary set aside at twenty percent could potentially put up. Barriers to housing development, if that is the goal of the community to see more housing built. In these districts, you may just want to think about the impact of that twenty percent versus potentially considering uh, a lower number, but all that said. You know, the analysis that we ran, the parameters that we used, um, mostly because of the wood frame construction, surface parking assumptions, twenty percent looks like it works. Uh, I think this is the last slide that I have, uh, the table on the right just shows the unit count scenarios that we ran. Um, going from a low of ten units up to a high of a hundred units, and then each of the three return metrics, the IRR. Um, which we peg anything above a fifteen percent, um, we say will work. Um, cash on cash, uh, we pegged that um, to a five and a half. So you can see those are below, and then the return on cost, we pegged that to six and a half, and those are above. Um, and in our experience so far with HLC, as long as the IRR and the return on cost or the COC. Are showing positive returns, uh, I think they've been looking at that pretty favorably, so I think this would work. And I think that's my last slide.
Um, that was a great roundup, um, thank you so very much. I'm going to now turn this over to planning board members and see if anyone has. Some questions or um, thoughts from Mr. Halverson.
Well, before we get on to um. Real thinking about this, I wanted to ask two very small questions, Elizabeth had given us a copy of your. Slide presentation some, uh, couple of weeks ago or something, and on slide twenty. There were two figures that I found confusing, and I don't care unless they actually affect. Your analysis, and they may not affect it at all, one of them was that uh, maximum lot coverage was. Said at forty percent for. We said it at forty percent for all five sub-districts, but your slide listed it as twenty percent for the Elm Street District. Which may be a typo in the slide, or it might have been something that got fed into your model. And again, I don't even know if that has the slightest effect on your um, analysis outcome. And the other thing I noticed is that the floor area ratio is listed as zero for every. Sub-district, and I think it would actually be the floor area ratio of the underlying zoning. But again, I'm not sure that that would have the slightest effect on your calculations.
Um, thanks for the question, so those snapshots um, came out of the MBTA compliance model. That I think we had gotten from Elizabeth when we started, so maybe those had changed uh, since we got those. But either way, um, those two things don't impact um, the modeling that we're doing because. We're looking at the build-out numbers from that model, which are in each of the district tabs. And just using the MBTA compliance model to select the unit count numbers that we ran through the um, EFA model. So it's really just check for us to make sure that this, that the um, unit count scenarios we're running through the EFA. Are more or less consistent with what you might see as a build-out for your district.
Okay, so then it doesn't matter, and I will not care about it.
Any other questions from members of the board? I, I think I would ask um. For um. Just some more um, reflection on what you're seeing from other towns in terms of what the. You, you, you've sort of said that the twenty percent seems like a stretch ask. Um, are most towns at the, who are, I mean, everybody can. You may have not done studies for any towns that decided ten percent was as far as they were going to go, so we, we have kind of a. A bias one assumes on any of the studies you have been doing, people are, are seeking to get to. I, you know, somewhere between ten and twenty percent, what would you say is, is the most um. You know, sort of what, what the distribution might be between the ten and twenty percent that you're seeing towns um, a- attempt to request from. Um, from the state.
Sure, yeah, great question, we've done um, probably done about ten of these, give or take. Um, there was one other community that wanted to go to twenty percent, and. Based on the zoning parameters that they had in place similar to you in Concord. It looked like it worked, and that was actually one of the communities where the AG just recently, I learned this morning that the AG came back and. Had comments about that, about is that, is that actually feasible, all, all the other ones are anywhere between twelve and a half percent and fifteen percent.
Interesting, thank you.
Now, I did notice, oh, go ahead, Mark.
That's okay, I was just gonna ask if we're gonna get copies of the slides, or.
Oh, uh, I believe we have them, um, so we'll make sure, sure.
The slides from tonight?
Are they changed from the ones we received a week or so ago? No?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, I noticed y- you said in your um, assumptions, you were assuming that all sites were. Flat and ready to develop with no demolition costs, and. Most if not all of our lots already have something on them, so. Right there, we can assume that the actual costs would be higher than what the model predicts, which. Could be a problem for arguing in favor of twenty percent as the AG is hinting.
It, yeah, it absolutely could be, well, if there's going to be demolition costs on certain acquisition sites, yeah, that. The developer would end up adding that into their, you know, into their cost pro forma. Um, but that's not something that we took into account or have to take into account when we're working with the EFA, but. It certainly would potentially add to HLC or the AG's. Arguments for, you know, asking a community to consider that, you know, to consider lowering it.
So.
Oh, oh, go ahead, Sue, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna ask, ask some questions, um. Either for you, Mr. Halber, center for Elizabeth about how, uh, what the interaction is, I mean, we were required to get. An economic feasibility analysis if we want to go above ten percent affordable under. But i- if the analysis says, yes, we could do twenty percent. But then the AG says, well, I don't think so, because the analysis doesn't take everything into account. But we were actually asked to get the analysis, then I wonder what the by-play is between what we've been asked to do. I would hate for us to pass um. Compliance zoning, only to discover it wasn't compliant later, it really seems like we're in a bit of a timing bind.
Right, so um, the warrant article that the board developed and ultimately submitted included similar language. To, I believe, what Lexington did, and it has the, you know, if um, HLC says we can do twenty percent. That's what it is, if HLC comes back and says, nope, you can't do that, then we'll go to fifteen percent. If HLC says, nope, you can't do that, then we'll go to ten, so the wording of the bylaw allows for um, that.
Right, and on those grounds, since the wording of the proposed um, zoning amendment doesn't prefer the. Doesn't say if the feasibility analysis says we can, it says if HLC says we can.
Correct.
I really see no, given that the economic feasibility analysis per se says, yeah, twenty percent would work. I see no detriment to just going along and seeing what HLC comes back and says.
Correct, that, that is basically the, the wording of the warrant of the bylaw allows for. While the, you know, um, Eric's economic feasibility analysis says. Yeah, under these parameters, twenty percent, but HLC may come back and say, yeah, that's, you know. Especially in a community like Concord, don't know what's going to happen, that's too close, we're not going to allow twenty percent, we'll allow fifteen. The, the bylaw does allow for that.
Okay, um, any additional questions, otherwise I think there may be questions from the public. Um, because I think this is a very interesting topic, um, I see Keith Bergman has his hand up, Keith.
Uh, thanks, Keith Bergman, fifty-six, the White Avenue, first, uh, thanks to Eric, uh, who I've worked with on. Many occasions before, he and Judy Barrett wrote a stellar uh, master plan update for the town of Littleton. Uh, several years ago, and, and Eric uh, was a great member of the MAPC staff for a, a long time. One of the questions I have is uh, whether uh, HLC has in fact approved anybody's. Uh, uh, any uh, MBTA communities request for greater than ten percent, it's my understanding not. Uh, not even, uh, as of a week ago, not even Lexington. Uh, uh, had, had had theirs uh, uh, approved. Um, uh, the secretary uh, at Augustus was our keynote speaker at this morning's. Uh, MAPC uh, council uh, meeting, and he was certainly, uh, you know. Right, in response to a question I asked about, how, how are they, how's it coming, uh, the, with your, your review of. These economic feasibility analyses that, that the, the, the answer, which didn't quite. Say how many had been approved, which I understand to be none, but rather that they were, you know, taking a very careful look at all of them. Because, as, as Eric said earlier, because some communities, uh, not this one, but some communities would be seeking to increase. Uh, housing, affordable housing as a means of, of, of warding. Uh, housing, so I'm just wondering, uh, Eric, what you're, uh, if, if you have any insight to what the. Uh, the track record is of uh, of uh, communities that are submitting uh, these uh. Economic feasibility analyses to HLC, thanks.
Um, yeah, bye Keith, nice to see you again, um, I. I thought Lexington had got passed, but I could definitely be wrong on that, and if they did, they're the, they would be the only one that I'm aware of. Um, so far with the communities where we've done EFAs, many of them have submitted. The EFA analysis along with their zoning and their compliance models for the ninety-day um, pre, pre-review. Um, several of those communities are coming up against that ninety days, and I'm sort of waiting. To get the review of the EFA, um, we did receive one. Back in January, I want to say, it was one of the first ones we did, and the only comment from HLC that we got on the EFA specifically was. We had met the lowest number of units that we had um, run our model against was ten. And I didn't realize that the threshold in the bylaw was nine, and they just said, can you please run it at nine, because that's the minimum number of units, and. That was it, that's all the feedback that we got on it, so. I, I wish I had more information for, for you Keith and, and for the board and, and others, but we just haven't gotten any reviews back on. The work so far, so we're also kind of just trying to do the best that we can, follow the guidelines as best we can, and as we get feedback. We'll continue to adjust our approach.
Thank you, uh, any other questions, I see Mr. Carr.
Hi, I'm Steve Carr, Musterfield Road, um, I naively would have thought that as the size of the developments got bigger. That the um, percentage returns would have grown, but that didn't seem true for your numbers, some they, they went up as they got a little bigger, then they went down, and then they went back up. So I'm serious about that, and secondly, what if, what if some of, in some sizes they work and some sizes they don't work, is that. Uh, do you pass or don't pass if that's the case?
Um, great question about the sort of fluctuation in these metrics, um, so one of the reasons why they do. Go up ever so slightly with the number of units, and we only tested up to about a hundred units, so you won't see a huge fluctuation there. Um, but one of the reasons why um, you kind of see those numbers sort of staying in where they are is. Um, you have to remember that as the unit count gets bigger, so does the number of afforded, or the. um, you have to remember that as the unit count gets bigger, so does the number of affordable, the actual number, not the percentage, but the number of affordable units, they continue to remain the same. Um, so it doesn't fluctuate too too much there, especially in terms of the ones that we've measured. Um, you know, for us, from my perspective, the IRR numbers are all above fifteen percent. The return on cost numbers are all above the six and a half. Um, so from my perspective, you know, what we've run seems to work, even though the um cash on cash returns are are a little bit lower um than maybe where they'd wanna see them. But this is kind of what we've been seeing in in a lot of communities. So you know, I think if you were to go with the twenty percent of town meeting, according to the analysis that we've run and the guidelines we followed, I think this would work.
Thank you.
Um, one, one question I'll I'll ask is the um, the um rental rates that were presented for Concord were, you said, one of the reasons that um uh get were were very high. We have, I guess, two large um developments, forty Bs coming through. And I don't know that they, those rates that they're quoting were considered in your analysis. Um, I think one of them at least is published. I I guess both of them have. I think they have to um present that to to the state. So I just wanna make sure that um those numbers reflected reality because there really are not a lot of um multifamily units in town to get a a great analysis of the cost data. So.
Yep. Um, so for the information that we pull uh that we did pull would be for any project that's that's actually built and occupied um as of the time we pulled data. So if there's a forty B project that's in front of the board or the ZBA right now and they just have rent estimates and it's not built, we wouldn't have that in our in our database. Um, one thing I I would have to just go back and check the comps that we polled. But in some communities where we didn't find um a really good base of comps, we would just look to nearby communities as well. So in the case of Concord, if there if I would have, then again, I would just have to double check our list of comps. We may have looked in Lexington and Burlington, like sort of nearby communities as well, just to see what the rents were. Um, just saying that if, you know, if brand new multifamily was built in Concord, a very desirable community, a relatively high income community, similar to a Lexington or, you know, Bedford, um, that we would assume rents would be similar to what those communities are getting for um new construction today.
Okay, thank you. Any uh any other questions for Mr. Halverson? If not, thank you for doing that supportive work. We really appreciate it. And um if you hear of anything, um, feed it back to Elizabeth so that we can be up to date and hopefully it will be good news for the affordability community here. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you. Good night.
Good night. Um, so I believe the um, oh, I have a question for Elizabeth. And that is, do we need in any way to accept uh this study as part of the, okay, so we don't need to make any any motions. Okay.
Now, um, just for the um board, the um, I did, once we got the economic feasibility analysis, I did submit to HLC for the pre-adoption review, which is Eric said, you know, they have ninety days. Um, so may, and and I put in the review, you know, the town meeting is April thirtieth. So whether we hear back from them or not before town meeting, I'm, you know, I'm keeping my fingers crossed and um but.
Do you know when the ninety day clock is up by any chance?
Um, so we.
Not that it means anything.
No, so um we got the report on what, February thirteenth? Or thereabouts, so that's, I don't know the exact date, but it was somewhere around there.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think uh now we're um is um MBTA all the time uh tonight and uh or not all the time, but a lot of the time. Um, then now we're going to move forward with another of our consultants, Emily Innes, who is working on the site plan rules and regulations. Um, Elizabeth, I'll let you take provide the introduction and and outline here.
Um, so from my um perspective, um, I think I only received um, and Emily, I haven't forwarded them to you yet. I only think I only received comments on the, you know, from Sue and from Linda. Um, and so just a reminder to the rest of the board members. Um, I I have started um individual meetings with um different town staff. I'm following um Emily um and I held a group meeting to, you know, just talk to them and get their feedback. And so I've started doing individual meetings with them. Um, just to specifically focus like, you know, on their um expertise and and that particular section of the site plan rules and regs. Um, as everyone uh can imagine, it's been very challenging finding uh time um with any town staff, but slowly chipping away. So um I know Emily is here um to talk about the board had originally um talked about having a presentation, a public workshop for um March twenty seventh. Um, and I know Linda and I talked this morning. Um, there there seems to be a a lot of conversation happening at, you know, at HLC and um, so I'm gonna turn this over to Emily and um see where she's at and what she's heard, cause I'm as I think through, you know, the timeline and the process, originally, we talked about having some type of draft document available. So when people went to town meeting and um to help them understand it's okay. These projects will need site plan review and this is kind of what we're thinking about. But in conversations also, we've had um just recently with even town council, some of the conversations that are happening at HLC and their reviewing of actual zoning language is kind of starting to um bubble up and create um you know, some uncertainty in at least in my mind, and I'll I'll let Emily speak, but how how we're gonna go about having site plan rules and regs when HLC is entering into the conversation about the language of zoning to begin with. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Emily and then um we can talk about um how to move forward.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you all again. Uh, just for the record, my name is Emily Innes. I'm president at Innes Associates and um uh helping you out with the site plan rules and regs. I have also heard um uh the that there are discussions at the state level about site plan review. Um, I don't unfortunately have specific details. I do have one set of zoning that should be coming back soon um uh from their review. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they're saying um uh about that zoning uh in uh specifically. Um, couple of things on on site plan review, just to uh consider, um, I'm I'm kind of not surprised to uh, you know, that this conversation is coming up at this point because I have uh um some clients who are using the sample zoning site plan rules um or site plan process uh that was developed um uh, you know, with HLC support and reviewed. But there are other clients of mine um whose site plan review process more closely tracks a special permit process. And so there's been a little consternation um uh among uh uh some of the communities that the uh site plan review that was in the sample zoning doesn't track something that they already have. So um I'm experiencing those conversations with clients now. I'm expecting that uh those aren't the only communities that are having that problem and that's probably some of the 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 conversations that are triggering, triggering what's happening at HLC. In terms of your own process, um, uh, you know, your schedule is is my schedule on this. So if you feel that you want to delay the discussion, that's fine. If you want to go ahead and um have it uh on the date that was originally scheduled, we can certainly work around that and I will reach out um to HLC again and just see if there's anything that they can give us now that can help inform that discussion. Um, uh, and obviously, if you choose to delay it, then, you know, we'll we'll continue to uh discuss it with them. Um, uh, just to see if there's anything that will inform your decision. I would say for town meeting, um, completely understood uh or completely understand the desire to have at least the draft rules and regs in place um prior to town meeting. So people can look at the zoning, look at the process, look at what would be reviewed and have that. I think if you did want to delay this step, uh, there's, there are, uh, we can create handout materials. You do have a draft that you're already working with. So I don't think that people um who are concerned about what would be involved in site plan review would be uninformed because there's something that's starting um with, you know, you're already starting with something already. It's the, it's the extent to that and the process that I think is what's being discussed uh at this point.
So I'm I will also add to Emily. So currently, our um within our zoning bylaw, our site plan um rules, our site plan review process does mirror the special permit process, which um also has the ability for, you know, somebody to appeal a decision um to land court within, you know, twenty days of filing the decision. And I think that's one of the things that HLC is um is discussing because um I I think their their focus is that um that takes away some of this by right um mandate. Um, and so it it may require um it it may require further conversation about um you know, the the rules and regs and specific to that topic, depending on um how the conversation with HLC comes polite.
Yeah, and to that point, um, when we were working on the sample zoning, we had the appeal process um follow the appeal process for a building permit because this was meant to be an as of right. And as you say, Elizabeth, there are other communities, including yours, where the appeal process goes to land court, which is more that special permit appeal process. There's also um some of the communities I'm working with have a public hearing requirement um for site plan review rather than just having it as part of the planning board meeting. Um, and there is of course, and and so for people who are sort of just joining and not unders not knowing the difference between site plan review and special permit. Um, the the special permit, the board can't deny the use, I mean, sorry, the site plan review, the board can't deny the use, the special permit, the planning board has more latitude to deny the application if it is not meeting certain requirements. But site plan review with that as of right use, um, there's not that ability to deny. Some of the communities I'm working with don't have that clarity of language um in their zoning and that's also causing a problem.
So I guess that just the basic question is how the board wants to move forward.
Right. Um, do we have any thoughts or comment from members of the board?
Well, I submitted comments, but I have no further comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, hmm, I don't know if anyone.
Why, why would we move forward if we're uncertain? First of all, we have a somewhat template in place that already exists that we can show to people at town meeting if they wanna know and that we're not sure of how the net result is going to be to, I think we need to wait on, I guess. I don't know. My opinion.
Well, and any zoning that we pass under this article will not take effect until after it has been approved by far too many approval processes. So we don't have to have site plan review in place when the vote takes place. It's less of a hurry.
Yeah, it was just being done so that we could answer questions for, make people more comfortable with it, but.
But if we have a draft that's this uh zeroing in, although not exact, that gives people an idea of what it would look like, even though it's not completely pinned down.
I I think um this goes back a little bit to the the Rogue Business District issue in my mind in terms of the um uh it uh rules and regulations there. And and I think that um the issue will be there is no special permit here. And we are saying to people, yes, there will be oversight on the part of the planning board and that oversight will be site plan review. And I think that the question at town meeting will be, okay, uh, you're saying there's oversight. We know it will be different than the oversight that you've been able to exercise in other situations. Can we see that? And here we'll say, yes, we'll see that. But in any case, we'll say, yes, you can see that, but it it can't really be approved anyway until the actual plan is approved. So we can only have a a proposal to begin with. We can't approve it until we get full approval for um for the um zoning and the mapping. But nonetheless, um, to have in hand um some something that has gone through some review from the planning staff and the planning board um to document that this is what we think is um appropriate. Um, is I think what what the hope was so that it wouldn't be um, we wouldn't be hand waving. We would, we would have things committed to some degree to paper in terms of what we plan to pursue. So I I think that was the original um motivation to move this along in in not a parallel path, but a somewhat close close path following on um towards town meeting. Um, but it does seem to me that that the situation may not be um uh what we had expected in terms of um the level of direction we're getting from um HLC um and the the lack of ability to see into what other um towns have, if any, accomplished anything along this path. So I I I hate to put a lot of work into a plan which may not be exactly what what we would hope to see anyway. So it it um, but so I think it's really a trying to assess the level of increased risk that whatever we do produce may not be what ultimately what we can submit. Um, and I and I wouldn't, I think it's just as bad to give people the wrong information. Um.
I I would.
And then we have to go back and retract what we hoped would be the actual, the actual rules and regs. Andrew.
I I think it's, it it would be fair to actually even say we had planned to base the rules and regs off of feedback that other communities had gotten for their whatever. And because we're not, there's none available, our process has been slowed down. We'll we'll obviously have public hearing that will, you know, it'll be discussed at planning board as a normal course of whatever, but but there's nothing available right now as a final that we didn't wanna confuse the issue. Cause that's that's the ultimate fear, isn't it, that you're gonna.
Well, it's even more complex is because um other towns that get approval for their rules and regs may have very different underlying um rules and regs with their zonings. They may have different altogether, you know, it's a hundred seventy-seven different solutions for the same problem. Um, and so how much um, you know, versus I I think the the prior discussion on the economic feasibility analysis is honestly pretty cut and dried. The whole rules and regulations, I think is much more tailored. To. Each. Each existing set of zoning that, that every town or city has. And, and that. And so maybe that means we just go with something that's very close to what. What we have. In terms of our existing underlying zoning and have, have a very simple. Process that again, rules and regs can be. Changed. If we find out. That we have greater latitude to do things. That we'd like to do. Right? Is that true, Emily, if we, if we. Skinny down. This whole process and made it. Very much like our underlying. Site plan review. But, but you know, maintained a very. Obvious. By right or as of right approach. Could we then if we found that there was greater latitude to have. More. Control. Then go back and redo. To some extent, the rules and regulations without having to go back to. HLC or would we still have to go back to HLC?
That is a good question. So you know, as Elizabeth pointed out earlier, you, you are the ones who adopt the rules and regs as the planning board. For the zoning itself, you would have to go back to HLC, right? If you change that zoning, they have to see it. They haven't given guidance on separate site plan rules and regs. I would. For the sake of the discussion, I would assume the most strict requirement, which is anything that you do. That might have an impact on the actual ability for somebody to produce the housing. They would want to understand what that is. And so you would probably have to go back, but. I'm actually going to take a note and reach out to HLC app right after I get off this call. On that question, because as I said, they have not been clear on the non-zoning aspects. The, the site, the, the separate documents. We had a little bit more discussion of design review than a separate site plan rules and regs. So I'll ask them that question tonight. I will say that they've been a little backed up.
Haven't, haven't we all?
I think that's absolutely true, but I'll note that you've currently got a. There's kind of two things feeding into possibly a rapid response on this. One is. Obviously you have the public meeting currently scheduled. It'd be nice to have an answer before that. If you decide that you want to continue with that on the schedule. And also I'm presenting site plan review at CPTC, which is the Citizens Planner Training Collaborative. And. Just over a week, and so I. Our, our, our professional interests are very much in alignment to this point, so I'll reach out and ask them.
Emily, could I ask a clarifying question? Now, you said, of course, that under site plan review, we cannot deny a use. But I want to clarify. Is correct, is it not, that under site plan review, it is possible to deny an application? In the case, in the specific circumstance where the use is granted with reasonable conditions and the applicant says, well. I don't care if you say those conditions are reasonable, I refuse to do that. And since. You can't deny my application, I'm just gonna not do that. And then we could deny the use on grounds that they had. Blown off the reasonable conditions and then they could take us to court and it would be a whole thing. And we would have to be careful about, but if there was absolutely no way to deny it, then the whole thing. Would be meaningless. So there has to be some way to say no, but only. If they refuse to accept reasonable conditions. Am I right about that?
There are very limited circumstances, as you already know, under which you can deny a site plan review. I think. As you say, the, the actual whose definition of a reasonable condition leads down a, a very expensive path. For all parties concerned, I believe, you know, if they submitted an application that wasn't complete and they. Refuse to provide the remaining evidence, remaining parts of the application. I believe you would also, of course, be able to deny that because you didn't receive sufficient information. On that, but that's going to be, you know, that's me as somebody who does regulatory work saying. Think that's the case. It's one of the things where I say always check with town council for the, the specifics on that because. There's a lot of case law around that that they'd be more familiar with. But, but yeah, I do understand that it's very limited, but possible to deny. And that's a good point.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I guess my thinking is that perhaps. We should go, continue to go. Forward with development of site plan rules and regulations, but. I'm not sure that we have. I, I think we ought to talk about what. The meeting on the twenty seventh could actually accomplish. If it's an educational meeting, are we at a, you know, which I think was the major. Point. Of this first meeting, I, I don't. Then, then it might still be. Appropriate to move forward because at some point we have to have an educational meeting if we are expecting to get. But if, if we feel like we need. More answers to more questions that, than we really can provide at that meeting, then perhaps we should defer it. A few weeks or a month. Or more. If we feel that. We really are looking for a great deal of community feedback. At that meeting, then again, perhaps it's premature. Be, because we don't have enough information to really seek. Feedback, so. Does anyone have any thinking on? On those options?
I would say. I'm a member of the planning board, I've reviewed everything, I find this confusing. And I can't imagine presenting similar information. To a, a, a group of, of the public and hoping for input or hoping to sow anything other than. More confusion. So I, I don't see with the current information we have. That a meeting would be particularly productive and it may actually. Just so kind of discontent because people aren't getting their questions answered, they're not getting the information they need. I don't, I wouldn't see. A meeting with the current information we have being of particular use or benefit.
As a standalone meeting, I. Think I would. I would concur. Other thoughts, anyone wish to weigh in?
Well, I attended the recent webinar on site plan review. Which was put forth by, I have, it's late at night and I've forgotten the name. And I found it tremendously helpful, but I'm trying to picture. Us trying to host something like that for members of the public and it was really. Pretty intense for people who don't have a planning background. It would educate people more about what site plan review is and isn't. But I'm not sure that people would want that level of detail. And if we gave less detail. I don't know that people would think it worth to, worth it to come out for. A half hour or twenty minute meeting to not find out that much and to not really be able to give feedback anyway, because we're waiting to hear more from the state.
Elizabeth, maybe we could put a section up on our MBTA website about site plan review. I mean, we have some things, but maybe this webinar and maybe some more inner. And, and you know, videos or things that. That could begin to. Provide. Sort of. The basics for those who are. Interested and, and we could begin to discuss some of that at our meetings. And then as we get some more clarity.
Yeah, so I think I heard. Emily offer to say, yeah, we can put together some fact sheets and so. Emily and I can circle back after this meeting. You know, next week and. Strategize on calling together, you know. Information, fact sheets. As you said, finding, you know. Free links to, you know. The, I think the webinar you went to Sue was Citizens Training Planning Collaborative.
I think that's right. Really good webinar. I, I, it was a recording and it happened earlier.
And as you said, and, and populate the MBTA communities page with a, a, a nice, good site plan section.
Right, which is really what. What is moving, you know, which is the future. And design review. Yeah, that would, that I think would be a good step. If there's any. Comment from members of.
I think we have to be real careful that we are doing everything we can to sell this project. At town meeting, okay? You know, obviously there's been a lot of discussion in the news lately about towns, you know, pushing back on this project, okay? I was a warden in one of the precincts over the election day and I can't tell you how many people wanted to talk about the. MBTA community project. It wasn't because I was on the planning board, they were just talking about town politics. And I think we need to be careful that we don't put any barriers in place. That make it seem like we don't know what we're doing or that the project isn't. Something that we should be moving forward with, because ultimately that's what we have to do is we have to sell the, or get the project sold to the town. Before we do rules and regulations. Or it's a mute point. So, my thoughts.
Well, and I think, I think. Having. Appropriate rules and regulations.
Will help sell.
Well, well, well.
I don't want it to be like Throw, Throw Depot again, that's all where people were concerned about, that's all, okay, I want.
And, and I, I think, I think we want the right rules and regulations and if we're not convinced that. We have them right now, I don't think we should move forward. I think we should move forward, but at a pace. Where we can develop them. Solidly. And not make a misstep.
True, but in response to. Mark's comment. We should be clear to the public that we are in the midst of developing site plan rules and regs.
Yes.
It's, it's not like we're just gonna not have them or they're gonna not bother to. Cover anything at all. In fact, it's a detailed. Document.
Right.
I agree.
If I, if I may, I think the, the idea, the, what Elizabeth said about collaborating on. Some fact sheets, some additional information. I'm thinking of what Abby said about. The amount of information in there. And the question Sue has, you know, it is kind of like a fire hose if you've never done site plan regulations before to. Go into a meeting and have a consultant stand up there and go. And you're not absorbing it. And so maybe an effective strategy would be to break the information into chunks. And so, you know, a high level, what are site plan regulations and then. What are the things that they can cover and how does the process work and maybe even some fact sheets on the. The different topics or, you know, even if it's just a page and there's some graphics and there's something. That breaks the conversation down into bite sized chunks. So that when you are ready to present the draft regulations for. For review and input, people have already received those chunks of information. And so they're better able to understand it and, you know, I'm happy. For Elizabeth and myself to just chat and see what that type of strategy looks like and bring that back to the board. Or, you know, for, for thoughts on that, if that makes sense as a next step.
That sounds great. Okay, let's. Yes, Mark.
No, I was saying, that's it, oh, sorry.
Are there any public comments? Are people who really want to? Jump in with any questions about site plan review right now? Okay. I think. The next administrative item is to move forward with a quick run through. Of. The articles that we'll be talking about at the hearing next week.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily, yes.
You're very welcome.
So. Who wants to go first?
I can go first, I guess.
Sounds good.
All right, so. Article thirty six is the zoning by law amendment, section two point two zoning map. Section seven point two floodplain conservancy district. Want to go to the next slide, sorry. Proposed amendment consists of correcting housekeeping items and grammar and punctuation. And include an additional requirement of the federal code regulations for the National Flood Insurance Program. Reasons for the amendment, correcting grammar and punctuation assists with clarity and interpretation of the bylaw. State model floodplain bylaw updated in twenty twenty. The requirement for all communities in the National Flood Insurance Program to adopt the bylaw updates. If not adopted, the conquer property owners will no longer be able to get flood insurance. Sorry, I'll have a little bit more energy, it's a little, little tough to have energy at nine thirty at night.
That's great, I love it.
That was Elizabeth's touch, but it's good.
I, I love the owl. Should we put the bullets about grammar and punctuation at the bottom of the list instead of the top of the list? So because, I mean, really, the reason for the amendment is that we need to. Deal with the update and the. State model floodplain bylaw, and while we're at it, we're also fixing the punctuation grammar.
I think, I think we gotta leave with the top, with if not adopted, you know, I, I don't know if that, we should leave with that or not.
We could put if not adopted. Into. I'm trying to remember what town meeting guidelines are here for what shows up on the monitor, I think boldface. I think never underline anything, but bold face is. The correct way to emphasize, because it's hard for people to understand. Sure. That works too. And then the next slide also has the bullet order or the previous one, whichever, yeah, correct, changed, flip the order. Oh, and. You'll have to fix. You have comma and semicolon. I would actually just leave out the period and the comma and the and, and the semicolon. And then make them be regular bullet items and then you don't have to worry about it. Yeah. Less is more.
That's it, short and sweet. Anything else? Can you still see my screen?
Yes. Okay, Andrew.
Andrew, you're.
Okay. The next is Article thirty-five, zoning bylaw amendment to section four point two point two point one, the two family resident, two family in residential B zoning district. Um, the proposed zoning bylaw seeks to allow two family residents, two family dwellings by special permit from the zoning board of appeals in zoning, in residence B zoning district. In two thousand and one, the town meeting passed an amendment to allow for two family dwellings by special permit in residency zoning district. To date, there have been a T B.
I, I think it's, I, I, I still, I wanna check, I think it's six.
Oh, it's six, okay.
But I'll have to, but I wanna check, so let me just highlight that and and I will find out.
Um, if you go to the next slide.
Oh, sorry.
You know, this map shows the location of residence C in orange and residence B, um, expanding away from the village center and, um, more dense neighborhoods. Um, if you go to the next slide. Uh, the envisioned Concord Comprehensive Long Range Plan used goal two, you, land use goal two is to explore zoning alternatives that enable higher density mixed use for more walkable and economically diverse neighborhoods within or near village centers while simultaneously preserving and restoring their rural and pastoral qualities of outline neighborhoods and the resilience of natural systems. The land use goal three is to encourage the production of small scale affordable how- workforce housing that is sustainable, resilient and consistent with town character. Additionally, um, goal five is to use regulatory tools to encourage housing the town wants, needs, especially denser housing near town centers, the way of reinforcing the existing historical character and support sustainable development practices. Since June twenty twenty-three, the planning board has heard from diverse group, uh, diverse groups, groups and individuals as part of the MBTA Communities Discussion, and there's broad support for more housing options. That allow for housing to be spread without the community, I just don't like the density part or added to the population, I think it makes it seem.
Yeah, you can, you can change your speaker notes to whatever you want, I just gave you something to work off of.
Um, the special permit process with the Boning Zoning Board of Appeals requires notification to abutters and a legal notice in the newspaper when property owner is seeking a permit for two family dwelling. The process allows the abutters to raise issues and concerns regarding specific project proposed. Um, the zoning bylaw has a maximum floor area ratio for all residential districts, which would still apply to the two family dwelling. Just because it's a two family dwelling does not mean it could be any larger. Um, there are eight special permit findings that the board must make with granting a special permit that include economic and community needs, traffic and safety, utilities and other public services, impact on the neighborhood character and the environment and the impact on town services. Foresee this being all that controversy.
Well, actually, I've been, I've heard a few things around town, um, and I wanted to pass them along because I think they're things that we can address that you can address, Andrew, in the presentation. One was that, uh, this article does not conform with the town's goals in the envisioned Concord plan on the grounds of the long range plan talks about, um, developing more housing within walking distance of town centers, which most of residency is, residence B is not. But I don't really see that as an issue because envision doesn't, in Concord, doesn't say we should only develop housing within walking distance of town centers. Um, it just that, that's the best location, but if that was the only place we ever put any housing, that we couldn't accommodate the town just in that one area. Another thing was that, um, if we increase the number of housing units in outside of walking distance, people would have to drive to get to town centers, but you know, if we don't allow two families in residence B, that will drive people even further away from town centers to undevelop lots and they'll still be driving. Uh, another reas- thing that someone brought up was that this won't be affordable housing, these will be market rate units. Well, yes, they will be expensive, but they will still be slightly cheaper than single family houses. Uh, so nevertheless, it does increase the housing diversity around town, at least in my opinion. And a final thing I heard was honestly, I didn't understand this comment. Someone was unhappy about, uh, the, the planning board having misdescribed the proposal several years ago to allow accessory dwelling units, um, and this person didn't want us to misdescribe this proposal as well, but the problem with accessory dwelling units was apparently that they were shocked to discover that, um, people would be able to buy a house in town and ask to put an accessory dwelling unit on it if it didn't already have one. Which is, I think, the way the legislation was described in the first place. They may have been under a mistaken impression that it was only for people who were related by blood, but that was never in the presentation or the zoning amendment or any other. I, I, I just was left confused by that comment. I wish I had had more time to talk to that person. So, uh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think the criticism I hear mostly from people is, oh, well, those are gonna the same ones Sue mentioned, oh, those are just gonna be as expensive as single family houses, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you're not, you're not gonna really gain this diversity of housing stock.
But one person went so far as to give me an economic analysis saying that a single family house would be two million dollars, whereas each of the duplex units would be one point five million and that's a big difference in price. It's still terribly expensive, but it's definitely a lot cheaper.
Right, but that, but that argument is, well, that developers are just gonna make more money that way. So I just, that, that's what I hear, you know, in terms of, uh, a criticism. Can, can I ask that we not use four question marks on that? And I, it's like a.
It's asking for trouble.
And, yeah, center.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if, you know, I'm sure you'll be prepared to ask the question, well, how many of those units have been built in? Uh, zoning districts Cs, you know, like what has been, been, you know, pu- what is the experience been and, and I, I think we sort of had positioned this as, this is, you know, a progression that was done in C, it, it's worked pretty well, and now we feel confident that, uh, in expanding to B is a reasonable step to take. I don't know if you wanna make that.
Well, I mean, the, the number was four or six, and Elizabeth's gonna check on that, but, I mean, this is just, it's just, the, the point is just that it's evolution, that we're, we're slowly tweaking things as we get more comfort with it and not trying to go too far, too fast, so that, so that town meeting is comfortable, that's the goal. Um, this hasn't created a flood of new units, but it has created some diversity, which is the goal.
Alright.
You, you know about the comment you've been getting and that I got as well, Linda, that this will just allow developers to make more money. Well, of course, if they didn't make more money, they wouldn't be interested in doing it. And it would allow them to make more money, but it wouldn't just do that, it would also give us more diversity of housing units and isn't that worth the trade off based on our experience from residency and this is actually, and, and we believe this is the next small step. I, I wouldn't wanna deny that it would give developers more profit, because otherwise, they wouldn't do it.
No, and, and we have no basis to make that denial. Or to, or to confirm that they are making.
Or to make that argument.
Well, that's true too, and I had somebody tell me.
Right.
Everyone, it has the same far. So, it, it doesn't have this, it doesn't have a different far, so I don't know what that means, you know, does that mean? You know?
Okay, um, so your, your public hearing is next week? So we'll, we'll go through the other two, but so Andrew, um, you're gonna make other, you know, edits and stuff, um, just send me, you know.
I'll, I'll, I'll send you the updated with the notes that I changed.
Okay.
And, and Elizabeth, but by when do you need those? Do you need to submit them to anybody or just, we just show up next week and?
Um, no, I mean, I, I, I work with, um, staff through the town manager's office. Um, and so, you know, that Tuesday morning probably would be the latest.
Okay.
Also, the town, the town may have changed the template for slides, but I betcha that under the old the template I remember, the bottom of slide four is outside of the bounding box. Which one could fix, like, it's fine, okay.
Trust me, I've pushed the limits of that.
Yeah, and I, I may not go that deep.
Yeah, and the bound, and the, the bounding box is the preferred.
Ah, okay.
We've, we've, we've pushed it often, so. Um, okay. Um, we're not gonna do that one, we're gonna go.
Well, this article is going to be the last one, so I, uh, if it doesn't get on, put on the consent calendars, it should be, and at any rate for our hearing next week, of course, I'm going to say that we saved the best for last. Uh, I mean, who could not be interested in this wonderful, deeply exciting article? Okay, so next slide, please. This Article thirty-seven addresses spelling errors, unclear phrasing, out of date references and naming conventions. You will notice there are many, seeing as how this amendment takes up ten and a half pages in the warrant. But don't worry, I won't go through every amendment in this presentation. Here are some examples of these housekeeping and cha- changes. They include things such as adding a missing comma and changing the word which to that. Uh, let's see, um, changing the word assure to ensure in several places to make the zoning bylaw consistent and under- better understandable. Changing the phrase not shown here, board of selectmen to select board throughout the zoning bylaw. Next slide. Changing that to than, which must have been a typo at some point. Next slide, uh, and, um, modernizing language in some places such as changing the phrase as conditions thereof of the following to the following conditions. Does anyone use the word thereof anymore? Really? Oh, okay, I do. I don't think I can say that, because I do, and it will just come across as silly. If anyone has specific questions about any of the proposed amendments, it would be my pleasure to clarify the proposed changes. I like the use of Scrabble pals, it sort of gives a flavor of letters and, uh, uh, which is what this is all about anyhow.
Perfect.
Alright.
Okay, you're gonna have people walking out of there with a smile on their face, Sue. That's awesome, okay. Multifamily overlay district. Uh, this is a rough draft. So, um, we're opening with, um, what is a map that many people have seen and I'm showing to remind us that, um, we are not alone as Concord trying to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. That a hundred and seventy-seven towns, um, and cities are going through the same process and our goal has been to, um, find a, um, compliant, um, uh, map and zoning that will satisfy, um, the state's requirements. Uh, the current status of multifamily zoning in Concord is that it does not exist today. Um, you can alter a single family home uh, into a two family dwelling by special permit. You can construct a two family dwelling in residence C zoning district by special permit. And you can build a, and this should be, I'll change, accessory dwelling unit on your property, but you cannot develop multifamily housing in Concord as our zoning code exists today. So what are the requirements for Concord specifically? We need to amend our zoning map to add a new zoning district or sub-districts with at least fifty acres. Those areas must avoid excluded lands such as wetlands, municipal land, conservation land, institutions like hospitals, churches, prisons and schools. And at least fifty percent of that acreage must be within half a mile of a commuter rail station. We also need to amend our zoning bylaws to allow, but not require, to be built at least one thousand ninety-four dwelling units of multifamily housing in the district. Those must have an average gross density of at least fifteen units per acre with no age restrictions and be suitable for families with children. This is only subject to site plan review, so it's, um, as of right. Compliance provides Concord with the benefit of state funding. We will remain eligible for MassWorks infrastruc- infrastructure funding and participate in the state's fossil fuel free demonstration program. In addition, will re- remain eligible for a number of state grant programs, the most of which is important for funding the Concord Housing Authority. It's also important to note what is not required under the MBTA Communities Act. The law does not require, as said before, that multifamily housing is built. It only requires that the town zone for it. The law does not require the communities pay for infrastructure to support housing development that has not yet taken place. The law does not override the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Acts or Title Five or other legislation present in Concord. It's important to note.
Linda, um, um, that one, um, I don't know if you also want to um, include that it does not override the historic districts.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, yeah, definitely. Um, it's important to note what is not involved in the MBTA Communities Act, though it is, um, ever present in terms of, of coincident events. And that is the forty B projects at Baker Avenue and Forest Ridge Road are not a part of the MBTA Communities Act. And the closure of MCI Concord is not a part of the Communities Act either. It's important to remember that this change, this law, is consistent with Concord's townwide vision of its zoning needs. These are highlighted in the Housing Production Plan of twenty twenty-three, twenty-eight and in Vision Concord, our master plan. We want to maintain a welcoming community by expanding housing options for seniors seeking to downsize, municipal workers wanting to live where they work and have worker, workforce housing. For young adults and young families to be able to afford to live in Concord and for those requiring accessibility features. We'd like to support our sustainability goals with this act by reducing reliance on automobiles and fossil fuel and support mass transit. In addition, the act allows us to prioritize pedestrians and alternate modes of transit rather than accepting ever increasing congestion from auto traffic and parking. It could add to the vitality and economic strength of our town centers by having greater density, more consumers and customers for our local shops. And improves residences' health outcomes from greater use of walkable streets. And so we began the zoning process for the overlay district almost a year ago with the selection of the planning board to, um, move this process forward, um, through public engagement with town staff committees and town residents. And the community mapping zoning and determination of the overlay district through sessions, um, all across the town. Uh, now we are embarking on the public hearings and shortly we'll be at town meeting. And just to demonstrate, um, And just to demonstrate, um, the great effort that many, um, residents um, and committees have put into this process. Um, it has, uh, really been a pleasure to work with everybody on this, and there really truly has been a community effort from beginning, hopefully, to the end of this process. And the next slide, um, can we go one more? I think this is out of order. But this is just a little bit of a recap of all of the, um, discussions, um, pinning exercises, online survey, and various events that the community has participated in, um, throughout this process. If we go back one slide, um, we'll talk about really what the, the preference principles were for citing the zoning district. I think that some of the main messages we got from these, um, conversations, exercises, and surveys were that people were, um, very much in favor of locating within half a mile of the commuter rail stra- station. Um, as much of the district as, as we possibly could. Uh, they wanted to optimize commuting options and decrease parking in town centers. Of great interest was the issue of height. Maintaining that thirty-five-foot height of, um, properties consistent with current residence district requirements and zoning, and as well, other dimensional requirements. People wanted to preserve ne-neighborhood character. There was a lot of focus on existing commercial and multi-fi-multi-family areas and avoiding single-family neighborhoods, um, to be rezoned through the MBTA law. Uh, the MBT let, MBTA law, we found, uh, wasn't suitable for everything. And that was, uh, probably wasn't suitable in a lot of, um, family neighborhoods, and also things like mixed use. Also, of great, uh, interest was maintaining local control, and we intend to do that to the extent possible, um, with the planning that we're doing for site plan review. And the, um, other condition that was very much on, on people's mind was retaining as much balance as we could between Concord Center and West Concord with the assigning of, of the various zoning districts. And so now, um, we go through the five community sub-districts. And I don't know if, uh, you just wanna page through these, Elizabeth. I don't know that I need to highlight each and every one of them, which I, I will do, but I think everybody's heard this before. And the hour is getting late. And then, um, also these slides to, uh, really demonstrate that we have met the compliance requirements, both in terms of, um, contiguous, uh, five-acre minimum districts. Then moving forward to the compliance, um, assumptions that we made, which reflect fully the underlying zoning requirements that currently exist in Concord. And then show in the, um, final compliance model results that we need the necessary dist- district averages, um, acreages within the transit areas, capacity within the transit areas, um, and final capacity, um, is about ten percent more than is necessary, um. But we wanted to have, um, a certain, um, comfort zone. Um, not too great, not too little. I kind of call it the, the Goldilocks, um, solution. And the, um, dens- density is required under, um, the guidelines. And then only two question marks. So, yeah, any, um, any recommendations?
Well, I think we should petition the town moderator to combine our presentation times for all of our articles.
Yeah, well, we can, we'll find out on, uh, next week. Yeah, this is, is probably, um, too long, but, um, it would be good to know what, what could be tightened up. We'll get some of that, and, um, and certain things possibly can go into, you know, sort of the Q and A.
Or, or the fact, I was gonna suggest that, um, slides twenty and twenty-one, which have text along the left-hand, in a left-hand column. Either people won't be able to read it, and then they'll be frustrated, or they'll be spending so much time reading it, they won't hear a word you say. I would suggest removing that text completely from the slide, and either put it in of, an FAQ question, or, um, say it out loud, but don't put it on the slide.
Great idea.
Also, um, yeah, go ahead.
Sue, sorry.
Go, there was some slide very close to the beginning where you mentioned the part about suitable for families with children. This is so hard to say, because our choices are either to be it, to make it too complicated or to make it inaccurate. The, the housing doesn't actually have to be suitable for families with children. It's just that we're not allowed to forbid housing that's suitable for family with children, but anyone who wants to redevelop a property is all senior housing or all, um, uh, you know, uh, studio apartments, they're perfectly free to do that. It's just, we're not allowed to say you can't have three-bedroom apartments, or something along those lines. So, I don't know, um, uh, right, is that second to left? No age restrictions and not forbid families with children? Ugh.
Um.
Oh, just get rid of the suitable for, yeah, on age or families with children.
Restrictions on age or families with children, okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
I, I take it back. Apparently you can say it short and comprehensible and accurate.
Yes, well, you, you and, and Elizabeth have a team of doing that. You're well-practiced.
So as I, as I think about this, and, um, yes, you know, the request of the town moderator will definitely be for more time, I think. Um, Burton for Throw Depot got eight minutes, and I, I I think that's probably. Well, that, even that wasn't enough, but, um, so I think actually for town meeting, it, it may be all of the initial info slides get picked out of the presentation and put into. You know, if somebody brings up a question, well, why should we, you know, do this, then you can bring up that slide as part of your question, but maybe not the initial presentation. But the only, um, uh, component in here is if you look at the actual zoning bylaw amendment, you don't have a slide in here about the affordability requirement.
Uh, you're right, and I, I meant to say that. Um, when we get to the section on, um, preferences, community preferences. So I need to put in a slide there, and I've actually been saying that, but in my own head, but I didn't say it tonight, is that we we have little a-ability to control, um, what the state will approve, you know, and, and go, go through the, doing this feasibility study, and that we have requested, um, affordable housing, but we have no control over that. It's an independent study that's been submitted to the state, and we will accept what the state determines to be um, acceptable and economically feasible in terms of the, um, affordability or, or in-incl-inclusionary zoning. Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, the, the public hearing is a little bit different than, you know, town meeting, but if you think about this, you know, Linda and I have been doing, you know, so much, you know, public, you know, outreach and education and, and, you know, talking with communities, a lot of it's been that educational piece of the MBTA communities. Um, but we're now to the point where this presentation needs to, um, think about just the zoning bylaw amendment itself. So we have, we have the maps in here that show the overlay areas, but then just making sure when you think about the actual text of the warrant, that those elements of the text of the warrant have been, um, included. So that's, that was the only reason I, that the affordable requirement
Right.
um, sparked my mind. I think everything else that's in the text of the men-amendment itself is somehow included in here.
Okay. Um. Can we take comments, um? Uh, Mike Lawson?
Thanks, Linda. Just a reminder, don't forget you can have a handout.
Oh, yeah.
And Elizabeth's remark about, you know, embedding a lot of detail in some slides you can pull up. But our part of the presentation is probably really wise. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Keith?
Uh, thanks, Keith Bergman, fifty-six, uh, White Avenue. Just a couple of comments first, and this is based on just watching the Select Board's public hearing, which didn't have any slides, and, and, uh, and when they were, um, trying to determine what their recommendations were on those articles, uh, this week. Uh, they were confounded by the fact that they hadn't asked for the mo-to see the motions uh, for the articles, and, and in fact, the template that the, uh, that the town uses at town meeting is the, you know, the first slide is the motion. So it, it may, it, it, it may seem unimportant, but it can help focus, well, what are we here to do? Uh, and it's not listen to the presentation, it's to see if the, you know, to the motion is that, you know, move that the, uh, that the town vote to approve article such and such as printed in the warrant, I'm assuming. In, in the case of all of the, all of these, uh, unless you have some other amendments that are, that are already in the can. Second, uh, point is, I think, uh, it would be important to say why you should do MBTA communities, and probably one slide is enough. Uh, it should be something other than just the word Milton with a red arrow, uh, and a circle around it. But, uh, it's that, it's, you know, it's the, it's the law, uh, it's a requirement, and it's only zoning. It's not, uh, there's no edict to construct the units. It's to, it's to, uh, it's to meet, uh, the, the zoning, uh, requirements, it's, and, and so, um, I'd, I'd say one slide of wh-why you're doing it would be important. Uh, but then to just get to, you know, get to this, to in broad brush what the various parts of uh, the, the bylaw are seeking to do. So, thanks for, thanks for your work on this all this past year, and we're getting, getting closer. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, Mr. Carr? Um, you're, you're still muted, Mr. Carr.
Um, on the, on the, um, comment that, uh, the article that all the developers will just make, uh, money, um, if we allow two-family houses, um, the point, yeah, I think that we all or most of us all agree with is Concord has an affordable, has a housing shortage, whether it's affordable housing or housing for middle-income people, and if the process of addressing that problem, developers make money, that's okay. Um, so, it's not a bad thing necessarily, no matter, even, even if we're really liberal, it's still not necessarily a bad thing. And if that's necessary to help us with our housing project, uh, uh, problems, yeah, let's do it. And then Linda's on yours, when you listed the various programs that will remain eligible, um, uh, it, it would be helpful if, in fact, you could say, and by the way, Concord has actually benefited from, you know, programs A, B, and C, as opposed to just a, a big, long list, which none of us, or most of us don't know what it does and whether it really helps us. I was gonna make a similar comment about when you had, when you started with the part that, um, there've been a lot of meetings and, and, uh, um, discussions going on about this, 'cause, um, we all probably sat through town meetings where people get up and say, I knew nothing about this. You know, how come you can suddenly, after only, in the, in, after, oh, you spent two years publicizing this? But then you came to the list of all the meetings and stuff? I really like that. That hopefully will tell people, yes, we really did spend a lot, so I, I really uh, think keeping that list of all those meetings that many of you had the pleasure of attending, um, should be kept in, in your presentation.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
I don't think we could fit all the, um, uh, uh, amounts, for example, of what we get from all of those programs on the slide, but that would be great in the handout, and you could say in your presentation, Elizabeth, and you can refer to the handout, not Elizabeth, Linda, while it's late, um, you can refer to the handout for, um, details on those programs.
Yeah, we have, we have made, um, several requests to get that information from the town, um, the town finance department, and um, it has, hasn't been forthcoming. I think, um, that the um, amounts, um, other than for the, um, Concord Housing Authority have been modest in the past. Um, I think, however, the, um, infrastructure funding, um, the, the town manager has said, um, that that is something that we're definitely, um, uh, want to preserve, um, access to that, especially looking forward. Um, I think that's kind of pretty obvious right now, but I, I don't know that we can look backward and get that information, um, and it's, um, so we, we may not be able to improve on, on that, uh, in, in terms of the data, and maybe that's something that we could eliminate um, if we're gonna have to take some slides out. Uh, Mr. Carr?
But, but I think if you can say, and we have benefited from, you know, some are all in, in at least name what they are, then you don't need to bore people with those a dollar or a million dollars. I think that gets the point. Otherwise, it just looks like a list that, you know, that may, anyone in the state, uh, state can benefit from, but who knows who the heck ever does, or actually, uh, so. But if at least you, yeah, we actually benefited from these, then at least answer the question that I might have, for example, yeah, but, but do, does it really help Concord?
Hey, thanks. Elizabeth?
Um, just real quick, uh, to Keith's point, um, for your public hearing, we don't include the motion slide. Um, but for town meeting, yes, the, the very first slide after the title page is, and the, and the very last slide of the presentation at town meeting is the motion slide. Um, and so, um, right now, all your motions are as printed in the warrant. Um, but after the public hearing, you know, you somebody may bring something up that nobody's thought, thought about, so that's when your motion at town meeting may be different than as printed in the warrant, but just answer that question.
Thank you. Um, Linda Escobedo? Oh, I think we lost you, Linda. Oh, oh, no, or maybe you, maybe that you were answering the same question.
There we go. Um, yeah, so to, um, Mr. Carr's point and some other comments that have been made, it, the, instead of that long list of various programs that we may be able to benefit from, I'm wondering if it would be possible to highlight um, cooperate, and completing, successfully completing the MBTA community zoning positions us well to work on the MCI closure with the state, as one example. The, um, pilot program for, um, the, um, no fossil fuel pilot program with the state, you know, to take that approach, and there may be others that could be added to that list.
Um. Yeah, that, that's some, something to think about, yeah, 'cause those, those are, um, I think.
Or maybe you include some, maybe you also include some of the other items that are on the existing slide, but you just position a couple of these points differently that I just made.
Right.
There, there was some very heavy hints dropped at that League of Women Voters. There was some very heavy hints dropped at that League of Women Voters presentation by our state senator and representative about if we turn, if we vote down MBTA communities, that will position us very poorly on MCI Concord, on the state engaging with us as a partner rather than just telling us what to do. Or doing whatever they feel like without us.
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure that the planning board is in position to to make that representation. I certainly think our state senator can do that. So maybe, maybe he'll be at town meeting, I don't know. But, but I think I would hesitate to to be as I just not in the same position of being, I mean, I could quote him, but I think that might be not the best thing to do either. So it's something to think about. I don't think we'll think that through between now and the public hearing, though.
Perhaps it, oh, not before the public hearing. And if the planning board can't say anything, if the select board got more straight dope, they could make a comment at town meeting. Or if any other body actually had something more solid, but we could at least say it might position us.
We'll see, maybe the bridge will say something and we can have reprints. So, thank you all. I think that's a great review. Oh, and I would say if anyone else has comments, please just shoot Elizabeth an email and she'll share it with me or any of the other presenters who later think of things. I know that the meeting time is moving on, and I think all that we have left to accomplish is liaison reports and approval of the minutes. So let us do that. Are there any town planner reports that you'd like to share with us, Elizabeth?
No, I will just let everybody know that senior planner Erin Stevens has resigned to stay home with her new baby twins. So we're all pretty sad about that. But I can't be too sad, you know, who can compete with babies, right? So she's very excited, so we're excited for her. So if anybody has anything that you, you know, contact with, you know, to her, just please direct it to me.
Any other comments from members? And do we have some minutes that we can approve? Remind me, Elizabeth, we can make a motion. I guess I should ask first, does anyone have any corrections or comments on the minutes that have been circulated? If not, then could I have a motion to approve the minutes of?
December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as drafted is what I move.
And a second? Okay, and let's start with Mark Giddings. You're muted.
Not anymore, yes, go ahead.
Okay, Andrew Boardman?
Yes.
Sue Felshen?
Hi.
Abby Flanagan?
Hi.
Rob Almeida?
Yes.
And I, Linda Miller, yes. Okay, thank you all very much.